Welcome to the San Carlos City Council Meeting for January 11, 2016. Please rise and join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unundergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item four is report from closed session. Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Mayor, there's no report from the closed session in the special meeting.
Thank you. Item five, council communications and announcements. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Wednesday evening, Chief Rothaus and his staff did an excellent presentation on residential burglaries in San Carlos. I guess a couple of hundred residents actually attended, and I urge everyone who may not have been able to make that evening presentation to watch it on the local cable channels or on the city's website, where I understand it's available. It's natural to feel threatened when you hear a friend or neighbor has been burglarized. After all, we all want to feel safe in our homes. Nowadays, thanks to social media, we can all learn about every home burglary in San Carlos almost immediately, something which would have been impossible just a few years ago. There have always been home burglaries, and unfortunately, likely always will be. As the chief explained, while 2015 saw more than the immediately preceding couple of years, there have been other years within recent memory which saw a similar number of break-ins. That doesn't mean we should shrug our shoulders and take no action, but it's important to realize this has happened before. If you felt reasonably safe in San Carlos during that time, then you should not feel unsafe today. Not overreacting is important because there are those among us who, perhaps out of lack of experience or because of how they view the world, will go to great lengths to try and scare us. Fear is infectious, it spreads rapidly, and it leads to bad decisions, if we choose to let it. So let's not. Instead, let's get answers to our questions, find out what has been done and is being done by law enforcement to deal with home burglaries, take the time to understand why law enforcement does certain things and not other things. They're smart and talented professionals, dedicated to keeping us all safe. Most importantly of all, though, learn what you can do to reduce the chance of having your home burglarized. The chief was clear as to how law enforcement cannot by itself prevent home burglaries. For one thing, the bad guys strive to get in and out in just two or three minutes, quicker than the police can show up, even if the house has a burglar alarm. But by taking a few steps, such as remembering to lock doors and yard gates, working with your neighbors to report suspicious activity, perhaps tweaking your landscaping to eliminate hiding places and installing an alarm system, you'll make your home much less of a target. And if enough of us do that, we'll make our community much less of a target, too. I don't mean to imply, by the way, that there's nothing more the council can do. There are additional steps I believe the city should take. I've been vetting my ideas along those lines with staff, and I look forward to sharing them with my colleagues when we take up the subject in one of our next meetings. I said earlier that I don't believe we'll be able to eliminate all home burglaries, but by keeping our heads, not succumbing to fear, and taking steps both individually and as a community, I'm confident we can make San Carlos even safer than it already is. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mark. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a lot happened over the last month because we were on a break. We did have a housing subcommittee meeting. The council created a new housing subcommittee, actually at my suggestion, and I'm happy to serve on it with Councilmember Griselli, and we made some progress there. And the only other thing that's really happened is I had elbow surgery last Monday, and if anybody saw me covering my heart with my left hand, I hope you'll understand why, because I can't lift my right arm beyond my navel.
I thought you had a heart transplant.
No. And if anybody thinks I did a good job on my tie tonight, I didn't. My wife tied it for me, so I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Ron. Bob?
I really can't match that, Ron. I don't know what to say. As Mr. Collins said, we were pretty much on break for Christmas, and excluding the council cities meeting where certain people were elected to different regional committees on the peninsula, different cities, I don't think that there was anything germane to the city except what Mr. Collins said about the housing subcommittee meeting that we had. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Bob. So I brought a little show and tell. Since we have these brand-new, high-definition monitors, I thought -- let's see if I can actually get it so I can see it. There we go. I thought I'd use them. So first, I want to note we have an absence tonight. Councilman Grocott, as many people know in the community, is undergoing treatment for cancer, and he is not here tonight. He will not be here for several council meetings, and we wish him well. I have quite a few items tonight, and I hope my colleagues will indulge me. It's been about a month since we had a council meeting, and a number of things have happened in the community. First, I'd like to congratulate Stan Moppen, being named the new police chief of Redwood City -- excuse me, fire chief, thank you, Bob. Stan has served the city of San Carlos for quite some time, and I want to congratulate him, and I look forward to working with him in his new role. Secondly, as Bob mentioned, we went to the -- Ron, Bob and I went to the council cities dinner, which was held in Colma. It's held in a fire station, which is a really fun event. The firemen make dinner for all the mayors and councilmen in the county, and it's an annual tradition at Christmas time. On Saturday, State Senator Jerry Hill held a town hall meeting at Plantation Coffee in San Carlos, and I was able to attend, and it was well-attended. He talked about some current legislation that he's working on, as well as some upcoming ballot measures that will likely be on the ballot in California this year. I'm a member of the Board of Directors for the Samanteo County Library System. We held a subcommittee meeting today to talk about the library's financial reserve policy. Currently, the library has a very conservative financial reserve policy, where we reserve 20% of operating revenues. We've made the case that since the library is reliant almost entirely on property tax, and property tax tends to be very stable, that we should lower that reserve and free up some revenue to be spent on library services throughout the county. So today, we recommended reducing the reserve policy to 15%. That will free up about $1 million to be spent in San Carlos and other libraries around the county. I serve on the Samanteo County Transportation Authority as the South County Representative. Samanteo County Transportation Authority funds transportation projects throughout Samanteo County. We had a board meeting last week. There were three main items that we talked about. First was Super Bowl LV. I hope everyone's getting excited for Super Bowl LV, and how the public transportation system, particularly Couch Train, is going to handle moving people up and down the peninsula, as well as the security requirements. It was a very impressive presentation, and a lot of work is being done. We also talked about what I'm showing here, which is the Local Streets and Roads Program, of which San Carlos is a big beneficiary. In the last fiscal year, the Transportation Authority provided $788,000 in funding to repair streets in San Carlos. It's indexed to the sales tax receipts, and as the economy is improving and sales taxes going up, we're likely to see more money than that in the upcoming fiscal year. Finally, I'll note that we have a consent agenda item tonight for the bike and pedestrian bridge proposal. We're asking the Transportation Authority for $1 million. We're going to get an informational item at our February board meeting, and that will be voted on at our March board meeting. And I'll be reaching out to staff and potentially other council members to come and potentially speak on behalf of that grant application. I attended a meeting along with Community Development Director Al Savay to discuss our urgency ordinance around requiring chain stores to get a conditional-use permit before they can move into downtown. It was held at Pia Cherry Restaurant. It was good turnout from a lot of local businesses, including The Reading Bug, Cuisinette. I don't know, Al, do you remember some of the other businesses that were there?
Pia Cherry.
Yeah, Pia Cherry, there you go. But there was a lot of good discussion, essentially about how we should define a chain store and what kind of findings we should find, or we should put into the ordinance, which is going to be coming before the council in the next couple of months. I, too, attended the town hall meeting that was held on Wednesday night in the council chambers on the Crestview burglaries. I thought it was a very good presentation from the entire Samanteo County Sheriff's Office, well represented by many members of the sheriff's office. I thought Chief Rothaus did a great job. I really appreciate all the residents who came out. I, like Mark, have been reflecting on this meeting since it occurred, and I would say one thing that we talked about at the meeting, or I talked about, is that because we've gone with the sheriff's office, we get, I think, a higher level of service for less money. But savings, which I believe has been presented to us at about $2 million a year, what we would have otherwise been spending, is essentially reinvested elsewhere on other parts of the community, and that's great. But I wonder whether the community would want some of that savings reinvested into public safety. And we talked at the meeting about potentially looking at an additional license plate reader. I think that would be a good idea. I had a subsequent telephone conversation with Chief Rothaus, and we talked about staffing patrols, and what he told me is that we run basically what's called a three-in-one shift, where we have three deputies and one sergeant, which is pretty typical for cities our size up and down the peninsula. And the question was whether we could consider increasing staffing at times where -- peak times where we see the most need, most criminal activity. So I think it's something that we should be thinking about as the budget season comes up, ways in which essentially the savings that we get from the sheriff's department contract, spending some portion of that back into public safety. I would say, and Bob may know this as well, I've driven up and down Crestview the last few days. I actually commute that way when I go to work, and I see a lot of patrol happening. I saw two cars this morning, I saw two cars the other day, and I really appreciate the extra effort. One brief, small item. On New Year's Day, my wife and I took a hike in Eaton Park, and we walked up to this beautiful lookout. It was a beautiful day, and there's a place called the Upper View Loma Road entrance, which gives a really beautiful view. It's one of the nicest views from our public parks. And as you trudge up that hill, you get there and you can look out, but there's nowhere to sit. And so what I thought, and what my wife thought, was we ought to add a bench. So I wanted to see if my colleagues would be open to having that be something that we consider as part of the Parks and Rec budget.
Agreed.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I'm almost done. So one of the great things about being mayor is you get asked to do lots of fun things. So last week, I got an opportunity to meet with a group of Cub Scouts. It's a group from Wolfpack 65. We spent some time in the council chambers. They had a lot of great questions. They had one specific item for staff that I wanted to pass on, which is that apparently there is a clogged water fountain at Burton Park, and I told them that we would look into that, so if we could have the staff look into that. I see Christine right there. But it was a great event, and I really appreciate them coming out, not just them, but their parents as well. So lastly, I have some sad news. So since we last met, a former mayor and longtime community member passed away, and I wanted to just take a moment to speak about former Mayor Glaten DeRosa. Gaten DeRosa, excuse me. Oh, it is Glaten, sorry. I apologize. It's Gaten, yeah. As you might know, I did not have the pleasure to meet Mr. DeRosa, but in learning a bit about him, I really wish I had. He grew up in New York. He moved to California in the 1940s. He's a World War II veteran. He served with the 94th Army Infantry Division as a master sergeant. He attended Stanford Business School and earned an MBA with a focus on accounting. He spent his career at Standard Oil, which later became Chevron, spending 35 years in the finance department. He served on the city council in the 1960s through the early 1980s, serving as mayor twice. He was an active member with the Friends of the Adult Community Center, serving as both its treasurer and its president. And he survived, by his wife of 65 years, Marie, eight children, 12 grandchildren, and two great-grandchildren. And so the entire San Carlos community is grateful for his service, and our thoughts are with his family, and I wanted to ask that, as we adjourn tonight, we do so in honor of Mayor DeRosa. Okay. Moving on to public comment. I have two speakers for items -- yes? Staff comments. Oh, pardon me, thank you. I'm new at this mayor thing. So staff comments on official business. Mr. Malpe?
Just two quick updates, Mr. Mayor. Piggybacking on Councilmember Olbert's comments earlier, I just wanted to make the community aware, we did have a very well-attended open house with the police department here, focusing primarily on some of the burglaries that have taken place in the community. That presentation's available to be viewed by the public on the city's website. It's also being rebroadcast every Thursday at 6:00 p.m. and every Saturday at noon on the city's public access television channel, which is Comcast 27 and -- what's the other one?
99.
99. So I wanted to let folks know that they could view that presentation at those times or visit it on the website anytime if they'd like to take a look and learn how to help protect their home from potential burglaries. Also, wanted to make the community aware of some ongoing issues that we've had with PG&E around line 147. There were some issues last year where PG&E was attempting to PIG, which is where they put the robotic probe through the line, to determine a whole bunch of things about the safety of the line. They encountered a problem where the PIG couldn't navigate several sections. It was damaged. The line was shut down, and repairs were made. They resumed testing a few weeks ago, and another probe encountered another bend, this time near Industrial and Britton, where the probe was damaged to a much lesser extent. The line was shut down immediately. We're expecting PG&E to come in for permits any day. They'll need to, again, change some of the pipe to take out some bends so the probes can properly navigate the line before testing can resume. So that's where we're at. The line's currently shut in, as it has been, for the most part, for the last nine months, and will continue to be. It'll actually be vented and shut down so that they can replace a couple of sections. Then it'll be repressurized, and the testing process will begin. So we'll keep you posted as that unfolds.
Thank you, Jeff.
One other thing. I'm going to need to talk again at the beginning of the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, moving on to item six, public comment on items not on the agenda. I have two speaker cards, starting with Rosemary Fisher.
I wanted to come tonight along with my Vice President, Jackie Featheroff. We're going to be giving you some calendars. The Arts Center moved from Redwood City -- we were on Broadway for 20 years in Redwood City, and we moved on April 1st to Industrial in San Carlos. So I want you to be aware that you not only share a sheriff's department and a fire department, but also an arts center at this point. And we are so happy to be a part of San Carlos. Our neighbors have been very cordial to us, and the chamber has been very helpful getting us started. So we feel very welcomed, and we'd like to welcome you to come. You have my card attached to the calendars. Please feel free to call me at any time. I'd be happy to show you the Arts Center. It is 10,000 square feet, and we have 35 in-house artists. It is a producing and exhibiting arts center. So thank you all for the wonderful welcome to San Carlos.
Thank you very much. John Hoffman.
John Hoffman, 909 Crestview Drive here in San Carlos. Mr. Mayor, council members, I put forward to you the proposition that council should limit itself to two terms, not to exceed eight years for any council member. The President of the United States is so limited. The people of California have also decided that that's a good idea for the legislature. And I think all of the programs or the committees are limited by you to a two-year term. I think it's time that you would do that for yourself as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public comment for items not on the agenda? Moving on to the consent calendar. Consent items are considered non-controversial and will be taken under a single motion. Any council member or member of the public can remove an item from the consent calendar should they choose. Would anyone like to remove any items from the consent calendar? And then, Jeff, you said you had some comments to make?
Yeah. Items seven, C, and D are agendized correctly in that they talk about additional funding coming from the inappropriate general fund balance, but in the reports and the resos, they reference Fund 25, which is the general fund capital fund. The funding would actually be coming from Fund One, which is just the general fund, and we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that error in the reports.
Thanks for the clarification. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar items seven, A through F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Yvette, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott, not present. Councilmember Olbert?
I will be voting yes on items seven, A through seven, E, but no. I'd like the record to reflect that I'm voting no on seven, F.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Item eight, A, consideration of adopting a resolution denying the appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a request for design review approval and a grading and dirt haul certificate for a nine-unit mixed-use development at 525 Walnut Street. I believe we have a presentation from staff. I believe the appellant is here as well? Is the appellant here, Ms. -- okay, great. And so we're going to have staff give a presentation, and then I believe you have a presentation for us as well? Okay. Mr. Savay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. One of the biggest challenges we have as city planners and planning commissioners, council members, is to ensure that new development fits into our community, and we have the zoning ordinance, design review, we have the zoning ordinance, general plan, we have design guidelines. So we have lots of different criteria by which we use to evaluate new development. And as noted, this is an appeal of a project that was very carefully considered by planning staff and then the planning commission on a couple of different occasions. So what we're going to do this evening is we're going to have our principal planner, Lisa Porras, provide you with some background and process and how we got to where we are today, and what the thought process was at the planning commission level. And as noted, the appellant is here, but also the project architect, and I believe the project architect would want to make a presentation as well. So with that, we are going to start with Ms. Porras.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. I think I'm going to need -- so getting started, I just wanted to provide the council with the following factors that will be the basis for your consideration of the appeal this evening. We do want to cover project background, which will include a project description, as well as the public process that evolved since the project was first submitted to the city for review and consideration. I want to outline the concerns that we received from the community, as well as concerns that were received from the public hearing process with the planning commission, because the planning commission itself had a couple of concerns and conditions that they imposed as part of the overall project approval. I want to also go over the project modifications. There are a number of different iterations that the project went through, and I'll go through those in some detail for your understanding. And we'll cover the points that were raised in the appellant's application to appeal the planning commission's decision. We'll touch upon the recommendation to the council, and as Al mentioned, the applicant is here tonight. I believe they prepared a presentation, can answer your questions, and that will basically summarize what we'll be covering this evening. So moving on to the project description, the project basically consists of a new four-story, 49.5-feet-tall, new mixed-use development. And this development consists of one commercial space, nine apartment units, and 12 parking spaces that are below grade. In terms of the public process, this application would require design review approval and a grading and dirt haul certificate. The uses that I described, the commercial space and the apartment uses are permitted uses by Rite in the municipal code, and all of the development complies with the development standards of the zoning ordinance. No variances are requested, and it is consistent with not only the general plan, but also the housing element as well. There was extensive public outreach that this project went through. About a year ago, staff started receiving letters from the neighbors and also additional letters from the residents of the adjacent apartment complex, Hollyview Apartments, which is located at 551 Walnut. So the applicants and the architects reached out to the residents, had several meetings with them. They also met with the owners of 551 Walnut. The appellant had reached out to city staff and also the project applicants and architects, and we had a site visit, onsite, with everyone working together to try to understand the concerns and see what opportunities there might be to make some adjustments. And I know that the architect had come to an agreement with the owners of 551 Walnut, and I'll cover that a little bit later on in my presentation. So overall, there were two planning commission hearings. The first was on September 21st, which was continued to November 2nd to allow the applicant to respond to some planning commission direction that was received at the first meeting, following the planning commission's approval of the project. An appeal was filed 10 days later on November 12th, which essentially puts the project now before the city council, so you have the authority to address the permits that are currently being requested. This slide here just shows the existing project or site conditions, as you can see from the street. So the lines on the slide here generally give an outline of the location of the project site. There are two units currently on the site. To the right of that is the existing building at 551 Walnut, which is the appelleance -- the location of the appelleance residence. And this rendering here shows a visual description of how the proposed project would fit in along the street relative to the existing building just to the right of that. And this is facing towards San Carlos Avenue, so this is looking south. Some of the concerns are -- actually, this is a list of all the concerns that we received, summarized here, more or less, from the neighbors and from not only the neighbors, but also the appellant herself. So the primary concerns that we heard multiple times was the loss of sunlight, the creation of shadows along the building at 551 Walnut, notably the windows of the elevation that would face the proposed project, including a loss of views. Those kind of are all combined together. There were some concerns in some of the form responses that we received about traffic from the one commercial space. The commercial space is 975 square feet. There were some concerns about the overall height, that the project might be too dense, that it didn't provide enough parking, and some concerns about impacts to the existing plants and trees that are currently on site. plants and trees that are currently onsite. So during the first Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission directed the applicant to go back and make some adjustments. So these includes the first, the first group being at the top, on the right-hand side of the top of the slide, which was to increase the south side elevation setbacks. They wanted the applicant to come up with some sort of transportation demand management strategies to help address the concerns related to, you know, parking and traffic generated by the commercial use. And they also wanted the applicant to go back and see what they can do to increase some landscaping along the side elevations. When the project was presented to the Planning Commission at the second meeting, the Planning Commission approved the project, but they added in additional, additional conditions, which were four additional trees. The project currently provides 16, 16 trees onsite, which is four times the minimum amount of trees required for the, for the project under the municipal code requirements. They requested that vertical landscaping be installed to, to cover 50% of the side elevations. They wanted the applicant to provide 50% subsidized transit passes for each of the units for a total period of seven years. And they wanted to address the exterior lighting along that south-facing elevation on the four-story section where there's an exposed corridor. And they requested that there be a timer and motion detector installed to ensure that the nighttime lighting wouldn't be constantly on. So as I mentioned before, the project went through a number of modifications. The first set of modifications was based upon neighbor concerns and also discussion with the property owners at 551 Walnut. So prior to coming to Planning Commission, they had already met with the public and the residents and agreed to making some concessions to the project. So the first was to provide landscaping along 535 and 551 Walnut. So these, this would be off-site landscaping, should the property owners require it and desire it and authorize them to plant that. I will note to the council that since this time, the property owners at 551 Walnut are no longer requesting that the applicant provide landscaping on their properties. They want to be more in control of the landscaping. If they want to provide it and plant it, they will choose to do so on their own. They will not be requesting it from the project applicant. There was also an agreement to modify the four-story corner that faces onto 551, which essentially amounts to removing some building mass and allowing an opening, possibly for allowing additional sunlight to kind of shine into that area of the site. They also made a modification based upon discussion with the neighbors and the property owner to carry forward an architectural detail consisting of perforated metal, a perforated metal screen, to carry that around the south side elevation and replicate it there to break up the massing and add some visual interest. And they also requested light, a lighter color stucco on the majority of the south-facing wall. When the project went to Planning Commission, there were additional modifications that were requested, which was to plant more plantings onsite and to increase the side setbacks on the left elevation, which amounted to increased setbacks that ranged from six inches to 15 feet. And on the right-hand side elevation, which is the elevation that faces the appellant's residence, anywhere from three feet to nine feet, seven inches additional side setback. There is a portion along that elevation that does have six-inch setbacks, but it's just for the first corner. For the majority of the project goes back, three feet to nine feet, seven inches. So finally, so we can see what this looks like, this is a depiction, a rendering of the elevation before the Planning Commission modifications. And as you can see here in this elevation, the project was designed to include three, three-foot vertical recesses along this elevation. You can see the perforated metal screen carried forward to this elevation as well. Following the Planning Commission's direction, this image here depicts the location of the increased setbacks. So the area kind of outlined or shadowed in red is the four-story, which was modified to increase the setbacks, and that area ranges from three feet to nine feet, seven inches. And then instead of the three vertical recesses, just certain portions of the project, they decided to take a section of that entire elevation and push the whole area back three feet. So the areas that are shaded in yellow depict that modification pursuant to the Planning Commission's direction. And I might add that the Planning Commission directed the applicant to focus on the third and fourth stories, and the applicant elected to also put in a recess along the second story as well. So here's an image that just basically shows before and after, so you can see them side by side, the three vertical recesses versus the additional and increased recesses and setbacks along the second, third, and fourth stories. And on the bottom image, you can see along the four-story, a greater recess at the uppermost portion of the elevation. To kind of see what this looks like from a different vantage point, this is actually a graphic that was prepared by the architect that we're using for our presentation this evening. But this is essentially a section view, so if you're facing the project, the area outlined with the red dots and shadowed, highlighted in yellow, is the building mass that was removed. And what we wanted to do is provide, I'm sorry, the arrows got a little bit, they moved, I guess, when we saved it to the folder here. But the uppermost arrow that goes in both directions is representing the distance from the top story to the building at 551 Walnut. And as you can see in this image, that distance is 31 feet. Moving down along that side of the elevation, the distance between the building is further reduced to 24.5 feet, because that's the area where only the three-foot setbacks were put into place. So I wanted to point this out to the council, particularly because it's somewhat of an unusual distance between buildings. You don't often see this in a urban context, or at least in the urban context that we have in our downtown setting. And I would note that even in the single-family district, the RS districts, the requirements for separation of buildings would amount to anywhere between 10 to 18 feet, depending upon if you're on the first story or the second story. So these distances here are, we find they're, they're, you know, pretty unusual in this particular context. So moving on from section view, we wanted to kind of give you a depiction of that, how that would look in plan view. So this, this slide here basically shows the second floor and the third floor, which both have the additional three-foot setbacks, which creates the 24, again, the arrow moved, but that's a 24.5 foot separation between the buildings. And then on the uppermost story, the four-story, that ranges between three to nine feet, seven inches. And you can see, again, a depiction of the area of the building that is further recessed or stepped back away from the existing building at 551 Walnut. This image here provides the council with a general idea of where the onsite project landscaping is proposed. As you can see, along the front of the building, Walnut, there is a number of different shrubs and trees, as well as in a private area along the upper portion of the side. And then on the rear common, or excuse me, the rear portion of the elevation, there is a shared open space for the residents that is also landscaped. Also on this image, which is not shaded in with a color, you'll know on the top and on the bottom of this image, there's additional plantings that the applicant would agree to planting if the property owners have an interest in that and authorize them to do So again, on November 12th, the City Clerk's Office received an application from the appellant appealing the project. And to summarize the points made in the letter, the appellant contends that the project will negatively impact the health, well-being, and quality of life of 12 of the 30 units at 551 Walnut, naming notably the loss of views and sunlight to that area. There is claim that the units are an extreme size, and because of the lack of sunlight or loss of views, that this would create social problems and possibly cause community disruption. The appellant is requesting that the project be directed to further setbacks, to do further setbacks along the front elevation and further increases to the side elevation, as well as removal of some of the windows along that elevation. I asked permission, and the appellant allowed me to take a photo during a site visit that we had last April. And this is the image that I took standing inside her apartment. And I'm providing this to the council to show the council, you know, provide them with some context about the views that she's referring to. This photograph was also taken during the same site visit. And in this photo, you'll see planning staff, the project applicant, project architect, and also the appellant, meeting onsite to look at the existing conditions and get a sense of the overall setting and the relative distance from the existing building to the proposed new building. You'll note that this project, excuse me, this photograph was taken in the morning. And I'd also like to point out that as part of the site visit, we got a good sense of how the project was already shadowed, if you will, during this time of the day, even without the proposed project being built. This concludes staff's presentation. The recommendation to the City Council is to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Planning Commission to approve the request for a design review approval and grading and dirt haul certificate for the proposed project at 545 Walnut. Staff is available for any questions the council may have, and thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Given that we have two other presentations, unless there's an objection, I'd like to have both those presentations, and then we can ask questions of everyone, unless you want to.
Chair, normally, we could do that. Normally, we, we go, we ask staff, but first about some of the presentation.
You're welcome if you'd like to ask questions.
Presentation by presentation, then we, we sort of compartmentalize it as opposed to the other. Okay. Lisa, I have a couple of questions.
Questions for Lisa?
Sorry. What's the, what's the height of the building north of this project?
551 Walnut? I believe that is about, I think it's just eight feet less than the project, so it's about 50, no, 40. I know it's in the staff report here.
Okay, I'm sorry, probably was, I just didn't see it.
No, no, it's, I think it's approximately 40 feet. And the 40 feet, the existing building is 40 feet, and the proposed building at 545 Walnut would measure 48.5 feet.
48.5?
49.5, excuse me.
So visually, I mean, again, pictures to make. I mean, if I look at the picture on project rendering here, this picture that you provided, that doesn't, nine feet to me, so, okay, that's why I asked the question.
I'm not sure they answered your question.
Well, I have another one to add on to it. What's the height of the existing, in other words, the existing building north, south of the project site? How tall is it?
South of the project site?
South of the project site.
That's 40 feet.
Okay.
You asked about the, when.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask in both. I apologize if I misunderstood, if I misspoke. What's the, what's the size of the building south of the project site?
40 feet.
What's the projected site, or what's the projected site height, the one that, that people want to build? How high is that?
49.5.
So again, this is a, this visual sort of threw me off. I guess it's because of the, the setback here is the one that's got that nine feet, I guess. Because if you look, the quick eye looks at this and looks at this, they look like the same height, but they're not.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, how about the height of the, the north building?
I believe the north building consists of a two-story, two-story, two units. It's the same, it's the same as the exist, the project site. Yeah, I don't know the height of it. I don't have that figure.
All right. Just one more question, I think, Mr. Mayor. So the trees that are shown on the before and after, that you show here, those are full, fully grown trees?
That's my understanding.
Okay. And how long does it take to get there?
I don't have the answer to that. Maybe the project architect, in discussion with their landscape architect, can provide that, an answer to that question.
Okay, great. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, I watched the Planning Commission meeting yesterday and read Ms. Navalo's appeal on it, and several things popped up, and I think a lot of them were answered. But you mentioned that the color of the, of the siding, of the stucco on the south side of the project. I'm still not clear what is going to be painted, and does that, does that have any, is whatever is proposed to be painted going to reduce whatever glare that they were concerned about?
I believe the intent of the, the light-colored stucco was, well, excuse me, the, the result of applying a lighter color to the stucco on that south-facing elevation was a result of discussions between the applicants and the owners, the property owners of 551 Walnut when they had met. And that was one of the, the color of the stucco was one of the items that they wanted the applicants to address, and the applicants agreed to that. I wasn't there at those meetings, so maybe the project architect can provide us with a little bit more background as to why they wanted the lighter colored stucco. But my assumption is to, you know, kind of brighten up that elevation rather than having it appear too dark.
Right. So a lighter colored, lighter reflection onto the unit to the south.
I believe that's the, yes, that was part of the discussion.
Just wanted to clear that up. There was also, this was brought up several times in her, in her appeal, was the suggestion of flipping the garage. And I'm not quite clear that I, I don't really understand what, what that means. Is the garage on the north side now, and they want it flipped to the south side? And what's the effect of that? Or is that, is that something I should ask the architect?
We can probably ask the architect about that, but that was not part of the discussions. The Planning Commission received all of the letters, the form letters and the letters from the appellant. But that did not come up as part of the conversation. There were a number of different things that were brought up, but the Planning Commission didn't require the applicant go back and redesign the project to move the garage from, which is currently, the entrance is on the north side of the project, to move it to the south side.
So I understand the appellant's going to make a presentation herself. Maybe I could ask her. I'll ask, I'll ask you later. Okay. The, oh, what, what, we got an email right before the meeting indicating that Councilmember Grocott lives immediately north of this, and there was a concern about the construction timeline. He's going to be home recuperating, noise, dirt, all, on all that. Is there, let's say, this is, the appeal's denied, denied, what is the projected construction timeline?
I would defer to the applicant on that question. I know they have been working with the Building Division for quite some time to make sure that, you know, their design was going to work from a building code perspective. So I'm not sure how close they might be towards, you know, working to obtain a building permit.
Maybe they can, maybe they can answer that. The next question I have was about parking. When you look at parking spaces, you determine parking spaces for a project based on the number of units or the number of bedrooms?
It's based on the number of rooms, bedrooms.
Bedrooms.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So in this case, there's 12 spaces, nine units, but there are 19 total bedrooms? Is that right?
I believe there are.
I think I read that.
Well, on the first, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. Eighteen, can you confirm? Is it eighteen? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15. I count 16, 16 bedrooms.
Okay. So 16, 12 units, 16 bedrooms, so that's basically .75 parking places. And is that, is that, that conforms with our code, I assume?
Yes, it does.
All right. All right. Oh, the, there was some mention about parking on Samtrans property for the residents. I wasn't quite clear on, on that and how, why that was brought up. Was there some, some proposal to allow those residents to use the Samtrans lot?
There is no proposal by this application to use the Samtrans lot, because the project is providing all the required parking per the zoning ordinance. I believe that discussion might have been something that the appellant described in her correspondence.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know why it came in. I just was curious. All right. Last question, I promise, and I'll have others, other people. How many, how many people are projected potentially to live at 545 Walnut? How many residents is it supposed to hold?
Well, there's 16 bedrooms. On the first floor, there's two one-bedroom units. We don't really have a projection. We could always look at our census information to kind of get a, you know, average household, you know, size.
I guess like two per unit?
Could be two per unit.
And do you, do you have any idea how many live at 551 now?
How many people live? I know there are 30 units on the side. I know there are thirty units on the side of 551. I'm not clear on, I don't have a figure for how many residents total there are, but there are thirty units on that site.
Okay, so we can assume there's at least thirty people there?
At least, yeah.
At least, okay. All right, that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Ron. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa, just a, first question, I think I know what the answer is from her presentation, but I just want to confirm it. If, if both five forty, if both of these two projects, the one that's already existing and the one that's proposed to be built, let's say somebody was building them from scratch both today, how close would the walls of the two projects be able to come, come to each other under our current zoning rules?
They could be zero lot line, provided that they're mixed-use projects. If they're 100% residential, they would have to provide additional side setbacks, but if, it's the same concept where you have a ground floor, commercial, small commercial space.
If they were all residential, do you have a sense of what the required minimum setback would be, or distance between the two of them?
Five feet at the ground level and then ten feet above.
So, in fact, in that sense, it's for multifamily residential, it's similar to single-family home, because that's the same setback?
Correct, yeah.
Got it. Thank you. Ron referred to the email that we got late this afternoon. As I recall, there was another comment that the author made in there, and I'm summarizing extensively, but raising concerns about what would happen during the rainy season with construction going on. And I was wondering if staff had any thoughts on that. Obviously, that's an issue that gets dealt with by contractors all the time, but...
Certainly. Well, the request from the, for the, before the planning commission was approval of a grading and dirt haul certificate, so this outlines, outlines the conditions, or maybe any modification to the hours for grading, et cetera, the dirt haul route, but the applicant is still required to get a grading permit from the public works director. So, the public works director basically has the final over, say, over when the grading permit can be issued, and they would take into consideration...
And one of the factors the public works director can use is the weather's not conducive to doing a pit right now?
Correct.
Okay. I see Jay nodding his head in the back, too. All right, last question is, you talked about the parking spaces per bedroom, basically. I think we eventually determined it was three-quarters of a space per bedroom, as it worked out. I'm curious how that relates to some of the older multifamily residential housing that we have in San Carlos. Have we in general required more parking space over time compared to what has been the case in the past, or not?
Well, if we're looking at zones that are purely residential, say, for example, the RM59, those parking standards, I believe, remain the same when the city went through its zoning ordinance update. The only areas where there were modifications to adjust the required amount of parking were in the mixed-use districts, and if we look at the zoning maps, we all understand that the mixed-use districts are kind of in our downtown core, you know, close to El Camino Real, close to public transit, to Caltrain, and so those areas, because of their geographical proximity to public transit, there was a recognition that they could, those parking requirements could be reduced in those particular zoning districts.
I see. And then, last question, sort of a follow-on to that one. And the transportation demand management program that was included, that the planning commission required, was that kind of a, a belt-and-suspenders approach to make sure that, that this building would not excessively impact on-street parking, or...
Yeah, the TDM ordinance was not triggered by the characteristics or the size of this project, but the planning commission felt, as, as a result of hearing concerns from the neighbors and also concerns about parking, you know, a lot of our new projects are coming in and they're complying with our zoning ordinance, but yet they're still a concern because these haven't been built and tested yet. So, the planning commission's response to that was to require the project applicant to provide 50% subsidized parking transit, transit passes for each of the nine units in the project.
Thank you.
For seven years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Why don't we have the project architect come up and present? I believe you have a few slides, is that right, to present?
Do you want to direct it first as opposed to the appellate?
Yes, yes, please.
Council members, mayor, my name is Toby Levy, I'm the architect for the project, and actually, Lisa was quite thorough in describing the process, so although, the project and process, so although I have some slides, I'd like to just run them, run through them quite quickly. The site has been described as the MUD district, and you can see that it is surrounded by a whole number of tall buildings, the one, the commercial building on the corner of San Carlos and Walnut starts the street, and going up into our, our, our project, there are several three-story building over parking, and ours is a four-story building over parking. One of the interesting things is actually, we had met with Council Member Rokat when we first started this project, and he lives to the north of the project, which is upstream from the, on the sheet, and we discussed the idea that we actually wanted to increase the setback from the front, and from the then-allowed mandatory front line of the building. In fact, we proposed, and the planning code has subsequently been changed, to allow us to have a greater setback, so we could modulate the front and not overwhelm the two projects on our side. In fact, we delayed our project about four or five months so that this ordinance could be adopted. Another thing that we did voluntarily is that we have a greater rear yard setback than we were required. We wanted to do this just so we wouldn't overmatch the site, and in fact, our building is not as deep as the building adjacent to us, to the south, nor as deep as the building is to the north. Lisa went through the elevations, we have some of the material. What we tried to do with the various materials was actually to use our, our skills and what, and what materials we have in our toolbox to make the building feel smaller. I did bring a sample of the wood, of the metal screen, so although it is perforated, you can see it has a design of sort of like reeds, and that's meant so we could have a screened-in porch that has landscaping and entryway on both sides of it. It is meant to be relatively transparent, so it was way for us to create an entry element without massing out the front of the building. So, this is what we're referring to, and when you question the height of the building, you can see the charcoal in back, which is actually at the fifty feet. But why it seems so much lower is actually, A, because of the color, B, because of the setback, and C, we also eroded that corner as requested by the owner of 551. So, like I said, we were really trying to make the building look and feel smaller, acknowledging the fact that we were building to the fifty feet that was allowed. We have more front setbacks than are actually required. This is a slide in the other direction. We actually tried to be diligent and removed in our Photoshop, actually, any tree we would be removing, but you can see the front, and we chose to put the driveway on this side, mainly because we wanted to be actually nicer to one neighbor since we had the courtyard on the other side. This is the building, it's showing the twelve parking spaces down, and just the floor plan you've seen before, you've seen these slides before from Lisa, and I do want to point out the green, which was actually the amount of area we took out when we met with the building owner next door. There's been lots said about the whole approach to the shadow of the building. In reality, we are north of the building, we are north of, of the appellant, and in reality, their building shadows the space between our buildings far more than we will shadow their building. In fact, if you look at the shadows, you can see that in most cases, it is their building which is shadowing ours, except for the late afternoon in summer, where actually you could say that at that point you would want some more shadows, and that in most cases being, you know, they're south of us, so they, you know, we're not causing the shadow. And the question about the finishes on the side of the building, I want to go back to the elevation, it, we had made an effort, the idea that we wanted to treat the side of the building as if it was a side of someone's courtyard. So, we wanted to paint it light, we didn't want it to be a blind side like, you know, some of the buildings have been built, we wanted to give it as care, as much care and modulation as we gave the front of the building, and yet we had proposed a whole, much more light area, and in, in response to the, you know, the owner next door, we actually took it back and integrated more of the gray stucco. So, yes, it will reflect more light in the back of the building, but in the, towards the parking lot, but towards the front of the building, we, we tried to make the building look smaller. Lastly, we did look at, seriously take the appellant's sort of scheme for our building and analyze it. We knew that she spent a lot of time on it, and in looking at it, we sort of judiciously sort of put it on our building, and I think we have some issues with it. One is that our task was, from our client, was to make family-size units as much as we can, whether they were one-bedroom, two-bedroom, or three-bedroom. They see this as an area where people will move down from the hills that want to stay in San Carlos, or people who are commuting elsewhere want to be close downtown, and maybe they're starting a family. So, we wanted to build units that people in their rental would want to stay in for a long time. We are not building, you know, studio and one-bedroom units, these are nice-sized units. Also, analyzing the amount of square footage that would be less, our, you know, the appellant would roughly take, leave us with either much fewer units or much smaller units, and we felt that that was not where, you know, our task was to do. And lastly, in analyzing it, where the bulk of the building that's being proposed is in the rear yard, I must say that we, our plans were very thoroughly vetted. We met with the building official, we met with the fire official, we negotiated a lot of more technical things, but one of the concerns from the fire department on both our courtyard, that's to the north, and our rear courtyard, that the fire department would have a straight shot out and would be able to put up a twenty-foot ladder, and hence, our rear yard is twenty feet long, and since our courtyard is twenty feet long, so we really, you know, that was, that, that's far for their egress windows in section ten of the building code, and this was a non-negotiable. So, as much as, you know, pushing the building back of the bulk would save, you know, would sort of help get better views for the unit, the units on the side, I do not believe the building code, the building officials, the, the fire code, nor the fire marshal would let us have this type of configuration. So, I hope I didn't take too much steam out of the appellant because we've already analyzed it. Thank you for your time. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Levy? Bob?
Yes, ma'am. So, maybe you can answer my question on the trees?
Mm-hmm. They are, we did propose trees that were going to be twenty, in twenty-four-gallon boxes if we got the permission to do them. I think, as Lisa said, although we had initially gotten permission to plant them, that permission was then rescinded, but we had assumed that we would plant relatively almost-full-size trees.
So, wait a minute, let me go back here. So, the picture that's on staff report...
I believe I have it on the screen now.
Where am I looking here? I thought there was a, anyway, there's a bunch of tree, oh, here they are, I'm sorry. Says project landscaping, there's ton, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten trees at the bottom. Are you saying you're not putting those in now?
Are you talking about the back of the lot?
Oh, ma'am, I'm talking about these here, these trees on the side?
Right. We have, we have not been given permission. Initially, we were given permission, but as of now, we do not have permission from the adjacent building owner to put them on their lot.
Okay, so they were gonna go on their lot?
Mm-hmm, and that was the way it was.
All right, I'm sorry, that's what I misunderstood. But if you did get permission, back to the question, how tall are they, and how long does it take for them to get to the picture?
Well, we had assumed that, like I said, we were going to do twenty-four-gallon, you know, sort of trees, and that they would come in at about twenty feet, and they would fill out about twenty-five, thirty feet worth.
And that would take?
About five years.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Sorry.
That's all right.
And I'm not a landscape architect, that's what I just remember, okay?
No, I understand, I'm just trying to get a feel for it. Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
All right, additional questions?
Can I just, I want to offer this, that we don't see building probably from a year, there was some issue about schedule, we don't see starting at the earliest until any, a year from this April, and your public works does not allow mass excavation until after April 1st, I believe, so in terms of cut and mass, you know, cut and mass excavation, they don't allow it until after the rainy season, and then we also have to have a sort of a management plan for any sloughing, you know, stuff like that, that gets submitted with our grading permit.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to invite up our appellant, Ms. Navalo, I believe you have a presentation
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Vanessa Navalo, and I live at 551 Walnut, and there were a couple of errors in Lisa's presentation, which I'll fix as I go along. Just to give you a little background, I've spent fifteen years, I did spend fifteen years as an architectural designer, and I've been working currently, I'm working currently at a large architectural firm administering commercial, large commercial construction projects, and I'm a California notary, and I'm a graduate of San Carlos's Citizens Academy. So, um, okay. Introduction. Okay, you've seen this one before. This is 545 and 551 next to each other. The red outline is the approximate height and size of 545, and what I'd want you to notice is the little slot between the two buildings. 551 is shaped like a T, which I'll show you in a moment, but that little slot shows you that the elevation along the side of 545 is not really going to be visible to the public, it's really going to only be visible to us. How does this? There it is. Okay, and this is zooming in. This is showing 545 built, and on the 551 property, you can see a lighter gray area. Now, the way 551 is oriented is that there's thirty units, and there are, there's a center corridor, and in the front on each side, there are three levels of units facing the street, and then in the back, there are twelve units, four on each level, on three levels, facing each direction. So, there's twelve units facing 545, and also twelve units facing the Samtrans building. So, the twelve units shown on this image are going to be facing 545, which is going to be ten, approximately ten feet taller than us, and the yellow arrow is the direction of our primary sunlight. The sunlight sort of starts in the lower left, through the day, it kind of starts in the lower-left corner, which, the lower-right corner, which is the east, and then it kind of sweeps around in clockwise motion, so that the only sun we really get in those twelve units is in the afternoon, and it's from this direction. So, basically, 545 will be blocking our, our only access to sun. This is the street-level view, and I wanted to make a correction in that the image before had me sort of living in the front units. I don't live in the front units, I live in the back in one of the twelve units that's going to be affected, and the twelve units in the back, again, those are our only windows, we have no other windows. So, you can imagine, we don't have balconies, we don't have yards. The only thing we have is windows in one direction, facing out to see the sky or the hills and trees, and we understand that we will be losing some of that view, but with the building being so much taller, it's basically going to block all of our view of blue sky, and that's what's, we're finding untenable. And that's what's, we're finding untenable. So, here's that facade again. And, you know, it's nice. To me, it looks kind of like a healthcare building on the Stanford campus. But the view is from far away, as if 545, 551 didn't exist. But 551 does exist. It's very close to 545. And I will explain why these trees are unreal and unviable in a moment. Here's an image that I created early in the process before I understood what, or before we all really understood what the 545 elevation would look like. It's more just to show the scope and the mass. But this is the sort of general, sort of closeness of the buildings to each other. And then, there's that little slot again to sort of know that the, the people walking on the street aren't really going to see this elevation and it's really going to be only visible to us. So, now, here we, we are. We're showing up next to the building. And we have three levels above the carport and this is to scale. And I guess I'll talk about the trees here. So, basically, to answer Mr. Greceli's question, the trees here are shown 40 feet high. And the sort of fuzzy grassy area on the bottom is shown approximately eight or 10 feet high. And the proposed planting here is in a four-foot-wide strip. I mean, four-foot wide is like this desk. So, you're talking about 30, 40 feet high planted in a four-foot-wide strip. But, and this strip is not like a traffic median. Ms. Levy has said that, oh, that should be okay because it's just like being in a traffic median. But we're talking about being with, right next to a park, an underground parking garage where the roots can't spread and the building going right up here where the, the canopy can't spread. So, how is that tree going to grow? And is it really going to grow to 40 feet? I don't know. The little purple area in the upper-left is what they're calling the concession. That was the concession that was made, the little cutaway that was made to somehow allow more sunlight and more blue-sky view for us. But if you notice, it's, it's above us and it's before our front wing. So, the, between the orange dotted line and the blue dotted line, the 545 property is full height and full width. So, that slot has not been reduced at all. It's full, the light is fully constrained and no, no concession really occurred. There was no benefit to that concession. It was sort of cosmetic. Nothing happened. And there it is again. So, this, so the green area shows the throat of impingement where, you know, there's no light coming through. Now, if that had been cut back more, we could talk about, okay, now we have a little bit more increased light. But nothing really happened. It was cosmetic. And if you look at that little deck, it's a public deck. It's a public deck that's probably four feet wide and like, it shows 15 feet deep. It's in line with our front wing. So, someone's going to go out, open a door, go out there, there's no chair. And there's still going to be a building right up next to them and they're going to, what, wave at the parade? It's a little strange. I think it's unnecessary. You know, they could have saved their, saved their money and saved their time. All right. So, here are some views. The view that Lisa showed was not from my unit, it was from my neighbor's unit or my, the, the, what we call the penthouse unit, which was the unit on the very top at the far rear. So, this is the best possible view. And this is the before and after. And again, this, the facade that I built, because I was a designer and I sort of know how to construct these things, again, doesn't show the sort of light and shade and all the sort of nuances. It's more just the shapes and, and locations of things to sort of show how big and how different it will really be. But you'll notice that the, the blue sky remaining in the afterview is only if he's putting his cheek up against the glass. Because in order to take this picture, his cheek has to be up against the glass. And if he stands 20, you know, two feet back from his window, all he sees is building. No more sky. No more sky at all. This is my unit. I live in the middle of the, of the three levels. And obviously, I can talk more about this because it's where I spend my time. So, this is my view now. I, I can stand six feet back from the glass and I have a fairly nice view. When I go up about 16 inches from the glass, I can look up to see my top wing there, which is 40 feet. And that was, that's what allows me to construct the, constructed, the perspectives that I'm showing you. So, this is when I'm 16 inches from the glass. And then, this is what it turns into, where 16 inches from the glass, which is approximately this, I will have to look like this and I will see about this much blue sky. And that's it. No more. The rest will be building. I would add that the, the windows are on, on the 545 project, those windows are on an interior corridor, public corridor. And a public corridor has to be lit 24/7. And the public corridor also doesn't need windows. So, you know, these windows are going to shine at us 24/7. Now, as part of the planning commission process, we sort of, they decided that it would be better for us if they put them on timers and motion sensors. But now, that means they're going to be flashing randomly at us all night, which is kind of crazy. I would say, forget the windows. Save your money. We don't need the windows. Okay. So, the points of this, the points of this appeal, I have three. One is depriving people's homes of sunlight and visible sky is harmful to their health and well-being. A viable no-loss alternative concept was proposed, so it's possible. And avoidable harm is inhumane. Human and social health. Sunlight and visible natural sky at home is crucial for human health. Depriving residents of sunlight increases their energy costs for artificial light and heat. Residents have a right to amenity and enjoyment of their homes. Cities incur increased social costs when people are more depressed or anxious. I attached some articles to my appeal application and I thought they were very interesting. I hope you had a chance to look, to look at least at the Atlantic article, which describes studies in healthcare settings where people with similar surgeries or illnesses with similar prognoses in recovery rooms that were facing only built environments versus recovery rooms that were facing gardens with sky visible. The patients with, that were facing building, gardens with sky visible recovered much more quickly, required fewer painkillers, had less complications, didn't go back to the hospital as often. And there's numerous other references here to the need for just the view of natural sky, for keeping people mentally healthy, not depressed, not despairing, having no behavioral issues and so forth. So, it's important for us to be able to see natural sky, blue sky, you know, weather, clouds, whatever. I don't know if you've heard of the WELL Building Standard, but LEED, the LEED standard is becoming very important and prevalent. It's a performance-based rating. And the WELL Building Standard focuses on human health in the built environment. It's a companion to LEED. Buildings are rated in seven human health areas: air, water, nourishment, light, fitness, comfort, and mind. Buildings are certified based on how they positively or adversely impact these areas. The most successful innovative companies are adopting these standards because they are good for business. And the standards would also be good for agencies and social policy. So, additional negative impacts without solar gain, energy use, and costs for artificial light and heat will be higher, defeating sustainability goals. Increased energy bills add stress and worry to residents for their impacting their health. And then, there are social costs. We have two elderly people in our building who are using walkers and don't get around much, so they stay home. And I, I just don't know how it will feel for them to not be able to just sit in a chair or at their bedside and look out and see sky anymore. No matter how, how beautiful the building might be, right? This woman, she just struck me as kind of indicative of this. New York unfortunately has no protection for natural light or sky. This woman is 72 years old. She's lived in this apartment for 50 years, over 50 years. And recently, a neighboring tower went up next door blocking all her, all but one small windows, window. She now struggles with depression, asthma, and despair. Interestingly, Japan faces enormous importance on a property's access to sunlight. Shadows of buildings cannot be cast on other buildings for more than a set amount of hours per day with a minimum requirement being set on winter solstice. Japan, you know, one of the most dense areas in the world. I think we could do pretty well in the city of good living if we, you know, wanted to. Okay, viable alternative. So, I'm not one to only complain without proposing a solution. So, I was thinking, okay, if I were in your shoes, I would say, okay, so Vanessa's complaining about this. But what does she really want? How do I, how would, how would I tell you what it is that would satisfy me? So, what I did is I established a base area. I said, okay, let's take the vertical square footage of the 12 units that would be impacted and we'll start there. And then, I thought, okay, so then what? And I started with an idea of you want 15% landscape coverage on the lot? Well, why not 15% opening in this facade, sort of parallel with this square footage to allow some sunlight in from the direction the sun comes in, which you'll see is in the upper-left. That's the direction. That's where it's still impinged regardless of that little cosmetic cutout. Still impinged in that direction. So, can I get a 15% cutout? Well, I did that and it seemed to be pretty extreme. And I, you know, I thought, you know, I want something workable. I don't want something that the developer can't really do or is going to really resist so hard that it just becomes a big struggle. So, what would be fair? So, I, then I worked with 8%. I worked with an 8% concept, which is the equivalent of about one unit. And this would be what it would look like. So, this is what I've started with. And I thought, hmm, okay, so that's, that's a big chunk of building that I would be asking them to remove. And then, it kind of struck me that if I took that mass and I put it on the back, which is already shady, that patio is already fairly shady, I mean, pretty significantly shady, then, then I, you know, I would have a better shot at doing something like this, which you did see. And you didn't get the introduction to it, so you didn't know what you're looking at. But this is what, what came out of it. And it's just a concept. It's not, I'm not the architect. I'm not spending my time working out the floor plans and all the details. But I'm saying that an alternative is available. Because when you think about the roof, well, let me put it this way. Let me, I'll get to that in a minute. But why the alternative is better? The 12 residences at 551 would be allowed some sunlight and visible sky, reducing the harm to their homes. The units at 545 Walnut would be improved. They would also have more amenity and I'll show you that in a minute. Same number of units are achieved. Project cost and anticipated revenue, same. Alternative is more farsighted. When neighbors also build vertical impact, the vertical impact on 545 would be minimal. And this is what I mean by the shading of the rear patio. Ms. Levy kind of sped through some of the shading and, you know, the shading is, I think, a valuable tool. But as I was really looking at these, I realized that the, the shadow studies really only show you the shadows as they are cast on the ground, on the horizontal ground. They don't really show you how the shadows are cast on vertical surfaces, right? So, we don't really know how the shadows are, you know, going onto walls regardless. In this case, we can see that the, that their new little back patio on the best day of the year, which is June 21st, which is what this image is, is real, only really has some good sun in the morning. By noon, it's mostly shady and then the afternoon is shady. And then, their recess on the side is mostly shady all day. So, their outdoor spaces for their own tenants are mostly shady. But what isn't shady is the roof. I thought, wow, you know, what another, what another great argument for a roof garden. So, value engineering. The, let's go from upper-left to lower-right. The meaningless consent, the, the little purple area, that little cutaway concession was meaningless because it doesn't clear our front wing. So, get rid of it. Save the cost. The 551 residents are the only ones who will see this whole facade. It's not visible through a narrow slot to the sheet, to the street. So, simplify the whole thing. Save cost. We don't need chiseled limestone. We don't need perforated screening. We don't need any of that. You know, it's only visible to us. The city doesn't, I don't see why the city would have that much interest in trying to embellish this elevation for us in ways that end up kind of being silly or harming us. The public corridors do not need windows. So, I'd like to also ask for a variance to request, to take those out and save the cost and reduce the annoyance of motion sensors and lights going off randomly all night. And the attractive color is nice, okay? So, but it could be done inexpensively with paint. Just paint it more interestingly. Here's the section through the building again. So, you've got interior to facade facing 551 is a public corridor on all levels. Public corridors do not need windows. Windows were only required by planning because they wanted to break up the mass. Public corridors are lit 24/7. Condition of approval was to install timers and motion sensors, which will make them flash randomly. 551 Walnuts are the, are the only ones who will ever see this facade, not the public. A simpler wall with no windows or flashing lights would be preferable. Okay, so, short-sighted versus far-sighted. Here's a similar short-sighted project in the 1600 block of Laurel Street. Notice the large recess on the north facade. Notice that this is a zero-lotline construction where buildings are wall-to-wall. And that construction scaffolding has been erected on the top of the neighboring building in order to build it. Notice also how shady the large recess already is. So, what happens when this shorter neighbor decides to build vertical to 50 feet? That little, that recess there just gets walled in and turns into a shaft. The other side looks very similar to the facade facing 551. It's got the recesses with the windows. But I believe these windows are to living units. They're not to a public corridor. So, what happens when this short little building here decides to grow back and up? It's going to block those windows. And then, what is going to happen? You're going to either destroy the amenity of the tenants in this tall building or you're going to tell the property owner of the short building that they can't, you know, develop their property? So, zero-lotline design, best, best So zero lot line design, best, best practice is to assume upfront that the neighbors will also build vertical. Side facades can be much plainer. They don't have to have all these sort of articulations. And create interim interest with disposable design features like murals or vines. Because you're going to go wall to wall. The other neighbor's going to build up against your wall. It's all going to go away. So recap. Viable alternative. 12 residences at 551 would be allowed some sunlight and visible sky, mitigating the harm to residences. Units at 545 Walnut would be improved. Same number of units would be achieved. Project cost and anticipated revenue, the same, based on value engineering. Alternative is more far sighted. When neighbors also build vertical, the impact on 545 will be minimal. Additionally, project would be a landmark for the city. It would be your first roof garden. If you had a roof garden project, how exciting. I mean, I don't think that would be totally exciting. Developer would be viewed as a visionary hero, putting up the first roof garden in San Carlos. And everybody's health would be better. Conclusion. Harm to the amenity of 12 homes at 551 Walnut, or to the health and well-being of their residents, is avoidable without incurring loss or hardship to developer. Point three, avoidable harm is inhumane. It should go without saying, but maybe it needs to be said again. Now, in every case that, a lot of cases that I know come up in front of the city council, everybody's talking about, oh, lawsuits. What's going to happen? Oh my God, we might face lawsuits. What's going to happen? So, okay, developer could sue, but what would be his damages? I've already shown that through value engineering, he would incur no or very little cost, or additional costs. Simplifies his whole facade, gets rid of all the articulations, gets rid of all the windows, doesn't have to use any, you know, expensive siding. All of that stuff just goes away. And he could put up a roof garden, and he could pay his architect to do new drawings. City has the power to limit development and stop harm to residents, hence this appeal. Now, the 545 tenants could sue, but we are not deep pocketed, so we would have to go pro se, which would basically be me, unless we could get a pro bono lawyer. A counter suit by developer would probably not yield any assets, because we don't have any. And our chances of losing normally would be high, but since we can show harm was avoidable, the chances of losing are unknown. Lawsuits are not. Allowing avoidable harm is not good social policy. So closing. These are my requests. My first request is to require a 10% cutback per the appeal application, based on the fact that these are our only windows, our only windows. They're our only way of seeing sky. It's not about sunlight per se. It's about not having to push your nose up against the glass and look way up here, just to see a little teeny strip of blue sky. I think 10% is reasonable. We would still be 90% blocked. This is an additional request. I'm going to request a variance for 545 Walnut's south facade to remove the requirement for windows and recesses on that face, in order for them to simplify and save cost. And my third request is, I request that logistics plans be required to show how construction will actually occur without access to scaffolding at the south elevation. Because if they're building to the property line and we're not desiring scaffolding on our side of the property, I'm not sure how that construction's going to actually occur. So I think it's, it would be useful for the city to require logistics plans. So I beg you to approve our requests. I know that it's been recommended that they be denied, but I hope you will not deny them. And let me just make sure I've covered all the mistakes. So I've covered the fact that removing the upper corner building mass to allow sunlight in was useless. Oh, my comment about the units being extreme size, my unit, my issue was not the fact that they were extreme size. My issue was the fact that they were large enough to shrink. And in fact, Mr. Collins, you asked about, I think it was you asked about, how many people might be able to live inside the units? I would be interested in that also, because I think the minimum, the minimum size unit in this development is a one bedroom that's over 1,000 square feet for a one bedroom, which is, I mean, I live in a one bedroom apartment that's quite nice. It's 600. You could have a one bedroom apartment that's 800 square feet and be luxurious. A 1,000 or 1,100 square foot one bedroom apartment is just unfathomable. And I'm not saying that you couldn't build it. Of course you can build it. But it could also shrink. And so there's room to shrink. There's room to push this around. There's room to reduce and still not lose any revenue, any, you know, amenity, anything. And in terms of how many people might live in each unit, I mean, unless the city has occupancy laws, I mean, there was kind of a, I noticed there was a little bit of a, sort of, I don't know a better word for this, but I'm going to say a schizo, sort of purpose to these units being family size and yet having no parking, having reduced parking. You've got these family size units with almost no parking and only shady little outdoor areas. I mean, what is the actual purpose of these units? And you've got them near public transportation. You've got them near the train. And during a lot of the planning process, we heard about how young professionals who maybe don't have cars are going to use their transit passes, and they're going to come and live at this building because they work at Google or they work somewhere, and they're going to use the train, right? Well, if you know anything about young professionals who, you know, have enough money to live in a luxurious, you know, space, the young data, data engineers, they put bunk beds in places like this, and they're going to put 10 young people in each one of them. You know, you've got 1,000 square feet. Hey, what the heck? Why not? You know? So is there going to be any limit on that? That would be my question. You know, that's another question I have. So is there an occupancy limit? So my hope is that you view my requests as entirely reasonable, low risk, and in the spirit of avoiding harm and creating a win-win for everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Nebula.
Thank you for listening.
Questions? Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, let me just look down through here. I think most of my questions are actually for the architect and for city staff.
Okay.
So I wanted to get a response and perspective on what, was a roof garden type arrangement considered? And if not, why not, if there's a way to answer that.
Through the chair. Maybe, I apologize, I'm just asking, perhaps if we had any questions for the, for the appellant.
Oh, you want to go for the appellant?
And then she can sit down, so they're not going back and forth.
Let me, let me take a quick look, just to make sure I don't have anything for the appellant. No, no, that's a good point.
I can answer a little bit of that, although Ms. Levy should actually answer it directly.
That's okay. I'll, I think, I think Mr. Griselli has a good point, and we'll, I'll ask the mayor and see if anybody else.
Any questions for the appellant? Ron.
Vanessa, thank you. That was really a good presentation.
Thank you.
Very thorough, very knowledgeable, thought of everything. So I'm going to ask you some questions, and I'm just going to ask you, and I don't want you to think I'm being argumentative, because, you know, they beg, but there are questions, and they beg some answers. So I, you know, I think you just did a great job, but a lot of things you brought up raised questions in my mind.
Okay.
And I try to see both sides of every issue, or sometimes there's more than two sides. So I just, I want you to understand where I'm coming from when I ask you these questions.
Okay.
I'm curious about this rooftop garden idea. What is it about a rooftop garden that changes this project and makes it better and is something that they should consider versus not consider?
Okay. So I happened to think of it because I have, I'm working on projects that now have roof gardens. So I have one that's just being completed, one that's in construction, and one that's now finishing design and will be starting construction fairly soon. So it just popped into my mind. It has no benefit to 551. There's no benefit of a roof garden to 551. For me, it was a way of sort of exchanging the features so that everything was still covered. So for example, by taking the mass off the front and putting it in the back, now their landscape coverage is reduced, and they need to have a certain amount of landscape coverage. So the way to get that back would be to put it on the roof. And that's all. It would just be a way of shifting, you know, you're shifting some of the mass around, and now you're going to shift the landscape around to kind of make it work. And it's neat. It's a neat idea.
I like the idea. I just, I kind of worry that if the landscape on the roof gets too tall, there goes your view.
Yeah, well, that's somewhat, I mean, the landscape architects should sort of address that, but that's somewhat addressed by the size of the planters, because, you know, like, if the roots can't grow 10 feet deep, it's not going to grow 10 feet tall, you know? So, yeah.
Okay. You mentioned about putting the mass from the front, moving it to the rear, but I think the applicant mentioned something about the 20-foot requirement in the back for the fire department. Had you given thought to that?
In my view, that's a little strange, because the fire department has no access to that rear anyway. Because they're, they've built all the way to the property line. So where is the fire department really supposed to go? I mean, they can go, I mean, they could go through their two-hour rated corridor, which is how they've addressed some of their egress needs, right? But now that they have these, this kind of extensive interior rated corridors, does the fire department really need access to those bedroom windows? I mean, I'm doubtful.
But you would agree that we probably ought to let the fire department make that decision?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right. You mentioned that the public corridors don't need windows. If they don't need windows, why would you need a variance? I mean, and if you lived within an apartment that had a enclosed corridor.
Right.
I don't know about you, I'd feel a little claustrophobic, you know? I'd want something to look at.
Well, I live in a building with a corridor that, you know, doesn't, and you go into any office building, I mean, interior corridors, they don't, they're all exit corridors. They don't have windows on them, right? So, I mean, maybe I used the word variance incorrectly, but my understanding is that it's a planning requirement to somehow break up the mass of the elevation, to put some windows there to give it more interest. You know, we don't need it for interest.
In the interest of time, I'm going to, I'm going to eliminate a couple of my questions. But you raise a point about the lawsuit. You know, the developer might sue, you might sue, there might be, might be, you know, lack of funds on your part. I'll tell you, my concern is that if we approve a, if we don't approve a project that meets all the zoning codes and building codes, we're the ones that get sued, not you. So you have to understand that when we consider these projects, and a developer comes to us and says, we're conforming to all the building codes and zoning regulations, we do have to consider that. And that if we, if we deny a project based on, and that conforms to all of our standards, we're the ones that put ourselves at risk of a lawsuit. So that's just something that you need to keep in mind.
Yeah.
And...
But let me, I believe you do have the power to limit some of that, depending on the nature of an individual project, you know? I mean, the planning commissioners said that they have reduced buildings based on views or sunlight or whatever. So that has happened, and it does happen.
I have some other questions, but they're not going to be directed you, at you. So thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Ron. Any other questions for the appellant? All right. Thank you, Ms. Nebula. Questions for staff?
Oh, can I say one more thing?
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
No, no, I'm sorry. We're going to move on to other questions.
Oh, okay. Well, landscape architects aren't experts in trees.
Thank you. Other questions for staff?
Yes.
Ron, or Mark, thank you.
I'll answer to Ron. It's okay. Do you want me to start with Stafford, or staff and the architect?
Your choice.
Okay. I'm just going to go down my list then, because as I said, they're all for one of the two of them. My question about roof garden. Was that considered? What are the trade-offs associated with it? And not necessarily specifically the roof garden, but the concept behind opening up that fourth floor and pushing things, pushing things to the back.
In general, this type of construction is made out of wood. In order to make this in any way affordable to build, it will be a wood construction. When we start thinking about putting lots of weight on a building in earthquake country, it starts getting really, really expensive. We have done green roofs, and green roofs deal with lightweight soil, and basically it's grass and for water absorption. But in this type of building type, we normally don't, unless we are in a concrete building, we never, we normally don't consider roof gardens. And you'll see them much more in concrete and steel buildings just because of the weight.
Fair enough. Weight-driven. Yeah, I'm not sure aesthetically what this would look like, but what about the concept of fine, then don't put a garden in the front, sort of take the front part of the top floor and move it towards the back? Make the back bigger? That was the other thing that happened in the, in the roof garden concept.
Actually, Vanessa was reading the floor plans correct. The water, the fire department does go through the corridor in a straight shot to the back. As I mentioned, we met with them two and three times. This has been vetted more so than any other project. We are required to have egress windows for all, for all bedroom windows, and the egress is for the fire department. So I, I, I guess I would, was not going to take on the fire department when they said they wanted 20 feet back there, and that's what they did. I mean, that's life and safety.
The 20-foot setback.
Correct.
Got it. Driven by the fire department. Thank you. Let's see, so it's not to have you keep popping up and down. Let me go down and look at the other questions I had for the architect. Ah, I understand the planning commission had basically required that there be timers on the lights in the hallway. Two questions related to that. One is apropos of what the appellant said several times. Is there a overriding aesthetic or design requirement reason for having those windows in the first place?
I do believe it is a planning requirement. I also believe that, you know, it's not something we would go to the mat for. The owners of the property are here, and probably you should ask them, so I'm not making compromises to them. You know, we're not here to torture our neighbors. I mean, if, if enclosing the courtyard is better, you know, we're cool with that. We were just trying to increase, you know, the setbacks, and we actually took space out of the units to try and do that, to move the courtyard. So that's not a deal breaker at all.
Before, I have another angle on that that I want to ask, but let me ask Lisa. Is there something about, in our building code, which requires the presence of windows in that kind of corridor? Or it could be Al.
Since he's getting up.
Since he's getting up.
Yeah, hi, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. I asked the building official that same question earlier today, and he said that the building code does not require windows when you have a corridor. It only requires it when you have a living area. So from an architectural standpoint, you know, it's, it's an issue, but from a building code issue, it is not. The, and to that point, the conditions of approval that were approved by the planning commission allow some flexibility to the planners to make those kinds of design, minor design changes, if everybody's in agreement. So we could do that foregoing a, this appeal. That could be, if that was directed and everybody agreed, we could just do it at a staff level.
And this next question is probably for Greg Rubens. Greg, if, and I'm not saying that even I'm going to suggest this, but if the council were to direct that the windows be removed, is that something we could do tonight? Or do we have to send it back to the planning commission? Or what's the process?
No, that's something in your discretion. These appeals up through the, in accordance with the zoning ordinance from the planning commission, your review is de novo review, meaning you can look at it with a fresh set of eyes and devise, through the design review process, you could, you could, you would be acting like the planning commission in designing the project. So the short... So, the short answer is that you do have discretion to make those types of changes based upon the design review criteria in our code, and that's bulk mass, appearance, things of that nature.
Got it. Thank you. Another question for the architect slash owner. The owner may...
The owner?
Yes, I know. I was gonna say, I know you're not the owner. I'm saying if they wish to reply to this as well. The appellant had made a comment several times that the types of changes that she was proposing could be done without the property owner incurring loss or harm. And I'd like to get the response from, and that, actually, now that I think about, that's probably a question really more for the property owner, but I'd like to get their perspective on that.
I mean, I would just say that in analyzing it, you know, seriously, that I found that we, we did reduce the area of the, what we were building by about a third, about 4,000, 4,000 square feet in a 12,000-square-foot building. So, that does, you know, create, you know, when you build smaller, it does create less value, so.
4,000 square feet already.
Honorable Mayor, council members. My name is J.D. Anagostu. I'm a member of the ownership group for 545 Walnut. I just wanted to reference a couple of things in regards to Vanessa's presentation. The few things that I think you need to seriously look at, it's although it may be in detail, it's still opinion and hearsay.
Excuse me, through the chair. It's, and I don't mean to cut you off as up to the mayor to allow other comments, but do you have an answer to my question?
Which question did you ask? About loss?
Yes, the, your views on the statement that the proposed types of changes could be done without incurring loss or harm.
Well, I'm not in the construction side of things in terms of that, but in terms of the way our window schedule is typically set up for these kind of designs, it's more towards the front and more towards the back, and then in that courtyard that faces the north, the windows in there. So, there's very minimal lighting for our, for our apartments on the right-hand, for our right-hand side of the property. So, therefore, it will be impacted. There will be some darkness to the, to the space there, because the corridor, those small windows enable some light to get to that side of, of the apartments. And the reason why we did that is because to accommodate setbacks for the upper levels. So, there is, there is a give and take here that has to take, you know, take place. If we're gonna set the building back, then there's some issues that come into play in regards to lighting and so forth. So, unless you allow us to go back to what we had, then maybe, you know, that could be taken into consideration. But it's not so easy to just simply say what kind of loss I'm gonna have, you know, in terms of that. The construction side of it, I don't, I don't comment on that, so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, would you like me to continue with my questions?
Yeah, well, let's move on to other questions. Thank you, sir.
The, the last two questions I have are for Greg. One is, and this was touched on a little bit actually in the appellant's presentation, I'd like to get your views on, one could argue that if, if we impose constraints that are tighter than what's required in the zoning code, and there's not some necessity for the applicant to ask us for approval, because they're asking for something else that's outside the scope of the zoning code, that opens the door for a takings argument, or it may, and I'd just like to get your view on that.
Well, I, you know, there, there's probably a lot of different hypotheticals I could discuss, but I, the issue I think before you tonight is not that issue. You have a design review, this is basically design review tonight. It's, it's look and feel, it's bulk mass, it's those types of issues, compatibility issues, the quality of materials. There's a whole list of criteria in our, in our ordinance. What you're talking about is the intersection between when a city is using design review is pushing it so far that it starts to be an ad hoc regulation of the, of the project. It could raise that kind of a takings argument, but it could also raise the issue of exceeding your authority under design review. There's other issues that could possibly apply. So, the way that this is brought forward to you is design review, it's an appeal of the design review approval of the planning commission. Findings were made that it was compatible at the planning commission level as conditioned. So, what you're looking at is, is there something else that the planning commission missed? Is there some input that you received tonight that might lead to some reasonable changes to the design? But I think if you, with a project like this that otherwise complies, the height, the density, the parking, all the other things that it complies with, you have some, you know, inability to, to overly restrict the development unless you can really focus on this particular design feature is just something that I'm not prepared to accept. And if that in effect results in a loss of a unit or something like that, if you have the, if you have the facts and you connect the, and this is sort of the horn but glau, if you can connect the, the impact with a condition or a change in the design with respect to our design criteria, you, that's a defensible position to be in. But if we are talking about things that are not in our standards, and I'll just point to one example, is views of the sky is not a standard in our, in our design criteria. Solar access is not a standard in our design criteria, but, and views are only a standard from public places. So, we've heard some arguments that are made that are not consistent with our design criteria.
I see.
So, I'm just, I know I'm probably over answering your question, but I think there is, I don't think, I don't see a takings issue as much as unreasonable regulation would be, I think, what would happen.
Thank you. Actually, well, all I was about to say is that in your usual style, you not only answered that question, but the other two questions I was going to ask, so I'm actually done for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions for staff, I guess. Lisa, Vanessa mentioned LEED standards. Do we apply LEED standards to these kinds of buildings? I assume we do. And if so, are they being, are they being met, and what level are they? Are they gold? Are they silver? What are they?
I'm not familiar with the, the resource that Vanessa pulled up, but I know that through the building code, there is the Cal Green Building Standard that is, I guess, of a higher standard than some of the green building provisions that were in place through other mechanisms. And I don't know if there's an equivalent to, you know, gold or silver, but we do have them through our building code. So, new projects do have to comply with that when they get their building permits.
So, LEED standards are just, are built in, baked into our, our building standards?
I can't say that all LEED standards are, but there are green building standards that are incorporated into the building code.
Okay. I think, yeah, I think that, that's all I have for the moment.
Thank you, Ron. I have one question for Lisa. So, when, when we're zoned for multifamily residential, you can go up to 50 feet, and someone is proposing a building in which there's a series of units on one side of the building, and the only windows into those units is on that side of a building, and there is the potential that another building would be built adjacent to it, blocking those windows. What standards or zoning do we have? Are you aware of any of those cases in San Carlos? I think the appellant referred to potentially one. Could you just speak to that issue in general?
Sure. In the zoning ordinance, we do have standards for setbacks alongside elevations or any elevation where there are bedrooms or living rooms or other areas that are, you know, accessed or, or lived in, if you will. And Jill probably has these off the top of her head, but I know that there are standards for exactly, if, if there's a living room that faces the side, it needs, that portion of the elevation needs to be set back a certain distance, and these distances range anywhere from five to 15 feet, depending upon the room type. But those are standards that are already built in our code for that very purpose, so that they're not right up against, you know, face-to-face against another development. So, again, from five to 15 feet, we do have those built in.
And that's from the property line?
Correct.
But in this case, there are no bedrooms on the, I guess it's the south-facing wall, and so, I mean, even though the property is setback, but the, the proposed development wouldn't have to comply with those. It's the development that was put in originally the 451, which, 551, which did comply with that because it's setback from the property line. Is that correct?
I believe Vanessa probably has this figure, the, from the property line to the elevation, the inset of the T, is I believe about 20, 20, 20, I'm hearing?
I think it's 21 and 40.
Okay.
Hearing 21, 22, somewhere around there.
So, so generally, it's been the policy that says that if, when you're developing bedrooms or, or windows on one side that could potentially become adjacent to another building in the future to set it back?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. I have one speaker card for Mike Farson.
Through the chair, as Mike is coming up. Are we going to give the property owner representative an opportunity to speak? I ended up cutting him off, but...
Both of us.
I, yeah, I mean, sure, if you could just, if you could fill out a speaker card.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, please, go ahead.
I'm gonna be pretty, oh, first of all, my name's Mike Farson, and I live at 551 Walnut Street. Thank you. And I'll be pretty quick. I just have five photos that I want to show you that are taken from my living room window. So, this is, this is what I, well, it's kind of hard to do here. All right, there we go. This is, this is what I see. Oh, I see. This, this is what I see from, from my window, standing, standing back just a, just a couple, couple of feet. This would be, this would be another one. Oh, and I guess actually the point I wanted to make is with, with the proposed structure, what happens is, then, then that's what, then that's what I get. And then I just have three other photos here of, during the daytime, displaying the same situation. This is once again right up against my window. When I held the camera at eye level, I'm 35 feet from ground level. The building is six inches short of 50 feet, so the proposed structure at 545 is 15 feet above the, the camera level as I took the photo, and so, once again, you know, that's, that's what it does. Same thing with this. That's, that's the result. And then this last photo is with me standing five feet back from, from my window, and with the, with the proposed structure. I see nothing but the side of, of the new, the new building. And so, I, I would hope, you know, Vanessa's presentation, as far as I was concerned, was brilliant, and not, well, I think she made a whole bunch of really good points.
Thank you very much, sir.
The sunlight...
Mr. Farson, if you could please just finish your thought.
Yeah, yeah. The sunlight issue is significant, and, and so, I would hope that you'd consider her suggestions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Yes, sir. You can hand up your speaker slip as you come up.
Should I re-initiate who I am?
As you like.
Okay. I'm, thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members for this opportunity. I just want to speak very briefly. I, my name is J.D. Anagostu, part of the ownership group of the 545 Walnut. What I wanted to say is that we seem to have lost focus on what the intent is, and I just wanted to briefly mention to you in terms of, I think just looking at her presentation speaks for itself. If you look at page six, the upper-left photo, shows, basically shows the amount of shade that their building provides. We're next door. You can see the building is fully shaded, our property. Every picture you'll find that she has, that they have taken outside their windows shows the amount of shade that their own building reflects. So, I need my notes. This appeal is not from an overwhelming majority, but from a property, a tenant or two, that always felt that they've entitled to have what currently exists, no matter what the city has approved, no matter what the ordinance says, no matter how many positive comments, or those that have felt no compelling reason to comment at all. No matter how many years it took to approve the zoning districts, with many outreach meetings, with a wide representation from the public to be involved in what would like to see in their downtown, your downtown, your process has been thorough, technical, and reviewed by many, by your departments of planning, building, fire, along with outsourced planners and architects and engineers, your planning commission, and the public with multiple neighborhood meetings.
Sir, I apologize, but if you could please wrap it up.
San Carlos has gone through a renaissance in their single-family neighborhoods. This continues today. I just want to read, I know you've received this already, but I wanted some people to hear it in the viewing audience. This continues today. This has been done with wise, wise design standards that you have implemented and stood behind. Now, there are many new and remodeled homes in the city, a highly sought-after city with the owners and occupants proud of where they live and love where they live. The design standards for the downtown follow the same wisdom with tremendous thought into them. Now, the renaissance is coming to the downtown. Embrace and encourage the need for this into your downtown. Stand behind these projects. Help move the downtown of San Carlos into the 21st century. The downtown that you envisioned...
For out of fairness to others, I need you to wrap it up.
I'm, don't, I'll wrap it up.
No, I understand. You're not the appellant, and public comment is limited to two minutes per item.
This will make you proud. This development will make you proud, and the legacy that you will leave behind for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
I'm gonna forego, I think, that's been said.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
We move a closed public hearing.
Second. A motion and second. Yvette, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grovecott, not present. Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
The public hearing is now closed. I will entertain a motion.
Through the chair, may I ask a question of Mr. Rubens?
Yes, you may.
Greg, if I wanted to make a motion that had an element in it of eliminating the windows, could I just use what's, what was put before us, but modified so as to include elimination of windows?
Yes, you could, and I think the, the support for that, from what I heard, was that, that there wasn't a need to reduce massing by these windows that the planning commission had found, and you had a difference of opinion on that.
That is correct. Mr. Mayor, if I may, I move to adopt resolution 2016 dash four.
Four.
Four, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos denying the appeal of the planning commission approval of design review and a grading and dirt hall certificate for a nine-unit mixed unit, mixed-use development at 545 Walnut Street, APN 050-072-220, with the caveat that the approval be modified to include the elimination of windows in the common corridors?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We have a motion and a second discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure whether you pressed the button first or I did, but anyway. I just had one comment I wanted to make, actually, not specifically about that motion, but there was a comment that was made during the course of the various presentations tonight that I, it struck me that there's a good teachable moment here, at least from my perspective. The comment was made that, that it's not in the public interest of allowing avoidable harm. In other words, we should never allow avoidable harm. And as odd as this may be for somebody, some people to hear on, on the initial go-around, in practice, almost all of public decision-making, when we are balancing the needs and interests of various parties, is in fact, a matter of determining what's, what's an acceptable avoidable harm. And that is in fact, the basis of almost all public policy. And it sounds funny when you say that. It's like, well, why would, why would the, you know, any public agency serving the public ever do anything that harmed anybody to any degree? Because the reality is, the interests of different people collide in different ways. And a big part of what we do as a public agency is trying to balance and assess those various collisions, and some things we do put very strict limits on, other things we basically say, yeah, that's, you know, there are going to be some people who are going to look at that as being harmed, but that's an acceptable harm, because if we block that, we've caused harm of another kind. You know, people get to enjoy where they live, but people also get to enjoy the property they own. And so, government is all about balance, and I just wanted to point out that, odd as it may sound, a lot of public policy is based on the notion of what's an acceptable avoidable harm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are always, these are never easy decisions. There's always impacts of every construction project, and there's going to be more impacts. We've had, we've heard impacts since I've been on the council, on the Transit Village, on Wheeler Plaza, on the hotel. We've got more projects that are going to have impacts. So every construction project is not without its impacts, and it makes me wonder, being that the 551 Walnut is 50 years old, if there is not possibly a developer out there that's wondering that maybe I'm going to buy that, because they can probably build a lot more units there. It's bigger property. So that building itself could be sold at some point. But I'm very, I want to say I am very sympathetic to Ms. Navalas' presentation. I thought it was very well done, and it made me think a lot. But this process is so much more inclusive than it used to be. It's a, it's a, it's much more, it's much more deep, it's much more public, and there's more care to it. When I was on the planning commission, and this, I'm going back 25 years now, this just didn't happen when I was on the planning commission. If we had six people at a meeting, I was excited. We just, we had a process by, by which a developer came in, said, this is what I want to do. We said, okay, that sounds good. We did the proper noticing, 150 feet. Maybe one person showed up. But over the years, as we've had a lot of infill, and we have more construction, and we have modified our, our zoning and building codes for all kinds of reasons, this, the process just by nature has become a much more inclusive process. I wish I could, I wish I could say that, you know, all of your concerns are going to be met. It doesn't look like they can. I realize that there have been some minor changes made, but when it comes down to it, we have a developer who's bought the land, followed the code, followed the law, and has, and is building a project that I guarantee you, 25 years ago, you wouldn't see this. You would just see a box, and they wouldn't care what happened to the neighbors. They would just blow them off. So the fact that they're talking, that they have talked, they have listened, they have made modifications, and they have listened to suggestions by staff, and even suggestions by the neighbors, tells me that there's been a lot done on this project. So as much as I would like, as I like all the things that Ms. Navalas suggested, I would, and if I had it my way, and I could design it myself, I might agree with her. But I'm not, I'm not an architect, I'm not a developer, I'm not a designer. I'm a council member that has to decide these kinds of disputes between developers and nearby residents. When you, when you rent or buy in an impacted area, especially in an area that's zoned this way, you have to expect that there is going to be development. When you rent an apartment, it doesn't come with a guarantee that your view is never going to change. And the people who move into 545, at some point, are going to have somebody on the other side. That's probably going to be developed at some point. I hope after Mr. Grokot moves out, because I understand he's in that unit, but, but those things are going to change. So everybody's going to have these impacts. So I, like I say, I wish I could find a perfect answer. I can't, and so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Bob?
As my colleagues have both indicated, this is always a difficult situation. I was on the planning commission after Mr. Collins, actually, for, for six years, and we had a number of these items that came up. As Mr. Rubens indicated earlier, our code and our laws don't allow for necessarily suns, the sunlight and views. I, I look at it, if, as, as Mr. Collins indicated, let's assume 545 was built first. This gentleman had his, he owns 545, and it's five stories, and someone wants to build at 551. We're having the same issues here. And that's, that's where I come down. It's like, who, because someone was first, that's, that's hard to do. I applaud the appellant, and, and all the work that she put in. We're obviously changing it in a miniscule way, but there is miniscule change, but there is a change that we've, we are, was in the motion. The process, as Mr. Collins indicated, was, was way better than even it was even when I was on council, as we were starting to get better and better around the turn of the century to, to do that. So I'm going to be supporting the motion tonight, and the, the difficulty, as evidenced or as indicated by Mr. Collins, is that there's going to be change. We have trees that grow up. I, I was asking about the tree sites. There are people, in fact, I live in a house, that if I look out my window, the tree, and I've been there for 35, or 30, 33 years, the tree wasn't as tall for a next-door neighbor, but it's tall now. And if they don't want to cut it down, and they don't have to, I don't have a view anymore. Well, that's just the way it worked out. Maybe I'm not happy about it, but that's the way the, the rules are. So anyway, I'm, I'm going to deny the appellant's appeal and vote with the, with the gentleman who made the motion.
Thank you, Bob. I'll just close by echoing a lot of the sentiment that Ron and Mark and Bob expressed. I want to compliment Ms. Navalas on all the time and effort and the thoroughness of the presentation. I know that's not going to be, come at a lot of solace. And I, I do understand that this is going to have a negative impact on the residents that live in those units. These are very difficult decisions, but what I see is a project that complies with the existing regulations, in which the property owner, the architect, and staff have worked to find some concessions that will help improve the situation, although I know it's not satisfactory to the, to the folks that are living on that side. But at the end of the day, our role is, is to interpret and enforce the law, and in this case, I haven't seen anything that indicates that the property owner is violating the zoning, and in fact, we've seen them try to be neighborly, and we want to support that. So I too am going to vote in favor of the motion, and I'll ask Yvette to call the roll.
Through Councilmember Collins.
Pardon me? Yes.
May I extend my comment just very briefly?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Navalas, I actually did not specifically thank you for all your work, but I, I second and third and fourth my colleague's comments. I would also encourage you that the rules under which we set zoning codes and the general plan and whatnot do get revisited from time to time. In fact, they have to by law be revisited and reviewed from time to time. And I hope you will still be part of our community when that next comes up. I actually don't know the exact date of it. And I would strongly encourage you to share your perspectives and the work you've done with them, because you raised a number of, you know, the situation is complex, but you raised a number of good points, and it's worth feeding that into the discussion.
Thank you, Mark. Yvette?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grace Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot, not present. Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
And with that, we're going to move on to item 9A. Consideration of adopting a resolution appropriating $150,000 from the capital fund unassigned balance to the design of the Highlands Park Play Area Safety and Inclusive Access Upgrades Project, C9363, and authorizing the city manager to execute the design contract. Mr. Walter?
Mr. Mayor, good evening, members of council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director, and tonight, Grace Lee, city engineer, will be presenting this item, and so I'll turn it right to her without delay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Grace Lee, city engineer. The Highlands Park Play Area was constructed back in 1998, and the city's 2008 Parks Master Plan recommended the replacement of the play area, and it's mainly due to two reasons. The current play equipment is not up to standard. It's actually not up to the safety standards of the fall zones and the height clearance. And it, also, the current design of the steps, the curves, the sand, it's not ADA accessible. So tonight's request is to appropriate $150,000 from the capital unassigned fund balance for the, to start the design. Currently, the capital unassigned fund balance does have enough funding to provide that appropriation, and if approved tonight, staff will go select consultants, solicit public inputs, and the next, and will bring back the plans and specifications for council to approve for bid and construction of the project. And with that, I can take any questions or comments.
Questions for Grace. Seeing no questions, is there any public comment on this item? Hearing no public comment, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to move to adopt Resolution 2016 dash?
Five.
Five, a resolution of City Council of the City of San Carlos appropriating $150,000 from the capital fund unassigned balance for the design of the Highlands Park Play Area Safety and Inclusive Access Upgrades Project, C9363, and authorizing the city manager to execute the design contract.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Yvette, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grace Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot, not present. Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Now we'll move on to item 9B. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving no increase in solid waste rates for 2016. Mr. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's this, the time of year again that we have to address the issue of solid waste rates, and so I'll quickly move into my presentation. We also have in the audience tonight representatives from Recology San Mateo County, who are here, should there be any technical questions or anything that you would like to ask them. So we'll go right to the process. As the council is aware, and for the public's benefit, the, the two contractors, Recology and South Bay Recycling, they submit rate applications on a yearly basis. That was completed in the summer of 2015. The South Bayside Waste Management Association Board reviews and approves the revenue requirements, and that was completed September 24th, 2015. This includes the contractors' compensation and other pass-through costs. Council had an opportunity to discuss the 2016 rate issues on September 28th, 2015. So at that time, we were expressing to the council the 2016 revenue requirement, and if you can believe it, the 2016 revenue requirement is a little over $8 million. The estimated collection revenue at the 2015 rates is a little over $8 million. In fact, I'm not sure how accurate we can make these numbers, but $24 is about as close as you're going to want to get. So we are essentially in line, as we proceed into 2016, if we make no change to the rates, to be able to collect the revenue that is required.
I would expect next year to be zero, Mr. Walter, I mean.
I'm going to have to check my math for rounding errors.
Or at least, Mr. Walter, if you round it to the nearest 50 bucks, they'd both be the same.
Very good. So again, looking at the way that the 2016 rate year estimate shapes up, we have the base revenue, and then the Recology Services Compensation, which is a little over $5 million, the South Bayside, South Bay Recycling disposal and processing costs at almost $2 million, city costs and franchise fees, which are just a little over $1 million. And again, that was, that, the 2016 rates cover that 2016 base revenue requirement. So for 2016, we propose no rate increase in any category for residential or commercial. We do feel that further study of the overall rate structure is needed, and it's something that we started into this fall. We will be continuing to work with Rethink Waste and their staff as we look at the various rate structures, so that we can come back to the council and discuss the, this issue of rate equity. There are other member agencies that are in a similar situation as we are, with no rate increases proposed, but interested in looking at the rate structures between commercial and residential. So at this point, again, we'll be leaving, we'll be proposing that the council keeps the 2015 rates in place as they currently exist. So again, just to show that, the current rates for the residential carts, and as you can see on the far-right column, we do have a difference in cost. The smaller-sized residential cart is actually less expensive than the actual cost, and the largest residential cart is more expensive. It, it actually is, it costs more than the actual cart costs, so we'll be working on those issues. Unscheduled services, as the council is aware, these are the ones that private residents subscribe to individually. They pay directly for these, the special services that can be covered, backyard collection, moving carts, or overage amounts. And the small increase for 2016 is less than 1% based on the predetermined index in our franchise agreement. The total, the total cost to the city by not adjusting this at this time is around $1,000. So we have the ability to move forward without increasing the unscheduled services as well. So that's something which we can easily take up next year, when there will likely be another small adjustment to be made. The low-income rate program, I thought I would provide the council some information. You, you approved this with our 2015 rate application and the rates going forward. It assumes a 10% discount on the cart rates for folks that qualify through the, what we use as the criteria, is the PG&E CARE program. We advertise through social media and the Recology bill inserts and through a press release. At this point in time, we've had 52 households that have registered, and so far, we have not been able to, to attract more, but that'll be part of our approach this year, to try to expand the number of households that, that can and should take advantage of that. So far, the council's cost of that subsidy, which we, I think we had allocated in the neighborhood of $50,000 just in case, we have spent about $1,000. So we have a long way to go, but we'll be working on that. And so our recommendations are to approve no increase to the 2016 solid waste rates, and allow staff to continue to work with Rethink Waste to examine the differences in our commercial and residential rates as we look for and plan for future rate equity. I'll take questions at this point, if you have them.
Questions for Jay. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Actually, this is more of a comment, as you were talking about some of the, the follow-on studies and work that, that you expect to be doing. One of the things that I would ask staff to consider is, you know, we tend to look a lot at the Prop 218 issue associated with charging more than the cost of, of providing service. There's another dimension to this too, which, which occurred to me recently, based on some input from, or emails from residents, and that is that, that when you have mispricing like that, you actually are ending up sending a confusing message to residents about the sort of, the economics of, of behavior and whatnot. And, and specifically, even beyond the issue we have of, of the cart collection size, one thing that occurred to me is, and, is that we have had, you know, for many years, we basically do not charge for picking up recycling. And that's because the cost of picking up the recycling, it's not like it doesn't cost anything to pick it up. It's, it's buried in the garbage rates. And as people become more and more effective at recycling, which they're doing, that's going to create some interesting challenges for us in, in our rate structure, which I don't recall us talking about. So I hope that staff will be considering things like that as well. I don't have a proposed answer, it's just something that, I'd love to see what other communities and, and experts are coming up with.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ron?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Jay, I, we got a letter from-
Jay, I got a letter from, I think we all got this letter, at least I hope we did, from Mr. Barron's about commercial rates. Can you, can you bring up that slide where you were just talking about commercial rates?
I'm not sure I had a slide on commercial rates.
He has...
Just add the residential.
Residential.
Well, there was something at the end where you mentioned...
Oh, he was going to study it.
That's all, yeah. I think it was after that one. Oops.
Keep going.
Keep going. Okay. Keep, that's, I just wanted to look at that. This gentleman's concern was that it seemed like we kept putting it off and putting it off. So it's, this is something we're finally studying, and there's going to be some changes. He's assuming that after this whole study, we're going to reduce commercial rates. Is that, I don't want to put you in a spot, but, and you think that that's probably a likely outcome?
Well, I've spoken to Mr. Barron's, and I believe that is what his desired outcome would be because his example is the, the black cart that is collected at the apartment complex, which has more than five units that he lives at, costs more than the black cart that would be at the, the same-sized black cart that would be at a residence, single-family residence or up to four at a multifamily residence. So he believes there's no difference in terms of the cost to come pick up that one from in front of his place versus the one that is in front of the multifamily units. So there's some logic to what he says, but as was mentioned before, we've had years where we've had subsidies to incentivize recycling. And so the cost for those smallest carts is lower than what Recology's cost is to pick them up and, and have them dumped. So it is something that we need to kind of get a better feel for how we actually reflect the actual cost of the services for our residents. And on the commercial versus residential side, over time, the commercial sector has been charged more based on the relative cost, and we don't have any real explanation as to why that has occurred, but there have been increases over the years which have got us to where we are. So I think that, looking forward to this, I think we just have to finally tackle the subject. And I think Rethink Waste is getting that message, and we had a meeting with them about a month and a half ago, and they were concerned, as there are some other agencies that want to go down the same path. So I think we'll have a chance to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other questions?
Yes, or comment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Ron, just as an additional piece of information to remind my colleagues, when Jay was talking to us, I think it was in September, right, the results of the study? And please correct me if I'm, if I got the numbers wrong, but my recollection was that essentially, the commercial sector, the, the fees were exceeding costs by about $830,000. And conversely, the residential sector, the fees were below cost by about $830,000. And equilibrating them would require the rates to change about 25% in, on both sides, one side up obviously and one side down.
Right. Okay. Is there any public comment on this topic? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a mo, a motion to move to adopt Resolution 2016-6, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving no increase in solid waste rates for 2016.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
A comment if I may.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, you know, I've thought about this a lot before tonight, and I'm, I'm concerned that we are looking at taking no action on a number of potential problem areas that are embedded in our trash rates. We, as we've just been talking about, we have some classes of customers who pay more than the cost for the service they get while others pay less. In and of itself, that isn't necessarily a bad thing, to the extent the differences encourage behaviors that are more consistent with long-term public health and safety. And in fact, I suspect that that's why they were put in place many years ago. Unfortunately, they are, to me at least, inconsistent with the legal framework within which the fees must be set. We began to take steps a few years ago to reduce or eliminate these risks in our fee structure. Suspending that progress will just kick the can of risk down the road. Sometimes, that's actually a reasonable thing to do. Often though, it ends up being more expensive in the long run. I have, I just want to make it clear, I have no desire to raise anyone's trash fees, but I'm going to vote against this resolution because I think it, I think it exposes our community to risks which, if realized, will be painfully expensive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other discussion? If not, Yvette, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grace Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott not present. Councilmember Olbert?
No.
Mayor Johnson?
Now we will move on to item 9C. Consideration of appointments to the City Council Subcommittee and Ad-Hoc Committees for 2016. And given that this is my item, I will make a brief presentation to say that I've made some appointments. The, I have done the best I can to honor everyone's comments that I received. For the most part, if I put you on a committee, I took you off of another one. And I think that I've done my best to satisfy everyone's concerns, or requests. On the question of subcommittees, we chose to strike a number of subcommittees that hadn't met in quite some time. And I am proposing tonight the creation of a new subcommittee, which would be a parking subcommittee. I hear a lot of concerns from residents about the lack of availability of parking downtown. We have, we talk about parking in a lot of different forums, whether that it's a council meeting or economic development subcommittee meetings, but I think we need some serious attention on the topic, and so I'm proposing the creation of a parking subcommittee. And with that, I will take questions, comments. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I like your idea of a parking subcommittee. And in fact, as you were saying that, it made me think of something else let me throw out there. We actually have, hopefully relatively soon, a number of major construction projects that are going to be hitting the downtown. And, and by that, I also include the Landmark Hotel, which is not technically in the downtown area, but I think it's going to affect it in, in direct census. I wonder whether or not the council ought to think about establishing a, I guess it'd be a standing subcommittee to act as a clearinghouse and a place to discuss issues related to the impact of those kinds of developments on the community.
We, we have the Wheeler Plaza Committee, and, you know, we discussed whether we should keep that subcommittee going or whether we should strike that, given that the project has now been approved. And then, and the thought was, let's keep that subcommittee going and keep it focused on managing the, and attention on the development. You could, you could expand the charter of that committee to, you know, include kind of other development projects that may have a direct impact on the downtown. But, but that was the thought of that specific committee is to help bring attention and focus from council members on, you know, the construction period for Wheeler Plaza.
Personally, that sounds like a great idea. I mean, not, rather than create another committee, it's repurpose one that we already have that you were thinking of using for that anyway.
Right.
So I, you know, that's the mayor's discretion to do that, but I hope you'll do that. The other two comments I wanted to make is, is, one was, my quick scan down through the list when I was sort of tallying, let me call them active slash significant assignments versus less active and less significant assignments. For what it's worth, when I, my tally, it didn't seem like it was particularly balanced, okay, across the dais. And in particular, it looked like you and Ron got hammered a lot on, across the board. Personally, I wouldn't have a problem if you want to, you know, consider rejiggering things. That's just an observation. I know you, you spent a lot of time looking into it, and I remember doing it myself. There's no analytical way of determining it.
Right.
However, the, the one other specific comment onto that that I do want to point out and make sure that everybody's okay with, and Bob, I want to preface this by saying that please do not take this comment as a criticism of you at all, because I think you've done a great job with Silicon Valley Clean Water. But I just want to remind the council that we, this list would put Bob basically as the lead person on the two most expensive fee things that affect people in San Carlos. Larger, in fact, than the average homeowner's property tax bill that the city gets because when we were working on Measure V, I think Jeff told me that the, the average assessed home, or the median assessed value is around 600 grand, something like that. So the 1% on that, 6,000 bucks, we get about 11% of that. Is that right? So that's 600 bucks a year per, per property essentially, or per home. And the sewer fees and the garbage fees are much higher than that. So I just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with that. I, I'm, again, not a comment about Bob's stewardship of this, which has been great. I'm a little nervous about putting all of that on one person.
He has big shoulders.
Do you have any comment on that?
No, I, I, you know, seeing my name under the, the garbage one was, was interesting. No, well, one thing I do want to say is that next year, I, whoever's the mayor, I'm going to, whether it's me or whoever it is, I want to make sure that I'm not the one on Silicon Valley Clean Water. Because we have to have a transition, and, and whoever's on it, in that way, I'll still be on council, and so we'll be able to, you know, in case there's question, major questions or anything like that. I'm perfectly willing to, to, to put the time in for these two, as long as the other council members don't mind. There's not a lot of, and again, we have to remember that whether I vote at Silicon Valley Clean Water up or down, unfortunately, percentage-wise, doesn't have, I can influence, but Redwood City is the big, the big dog in that fight, and, and West Bay is the second big dog. And Belmont and San Carlos are, again, we, we go into things, and the other council, the other members of the board do recognize what they want to do, and we do get our way in certain times. But for the most part, there's not a lot of power there, and if, if we, push comes to shove. Just want to make sure everybody understands that. But I'm perfectly willing to do it if the council will trust me one more year to do that. And then, like I said, I had already planned the next year to, to transfer off, and, and perfectly willing to, to serve on the garbage and take Mr. Olbert's side on that. And that's always been a pet thing of mine, having started, having gone through the original bidding with Recology. So whatever way you folks want to work it, but that's, I'm perfectly willing to take both of those, both those on this year.
Thank you, Bob. To your earlier point, Mark, the one committee that you expressed some interest in that was the, that I didn't put you on was the Closing the Gap Task Force. And I know, you know, Ron's on it at the moment, so if you guys wanted to swap, I mean, it's, it's really up to you two.
You got that one?
Remind me again, Closing the Gap, housing?
It's about housing, yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, I'd be interested in doing that.
There's like three more meetings.
Okay. All right.
Ron, I don't know how you feel about that, or...
No, I, I, you know, my feeling is that it would be good...
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you say there were three more meetings before it ends?
I, I think this is a one-year thing, yeah.
Oh, well...
It might be ongoing. I'm just not, I'm not sure. I mean, they are...
Because if you've been on it for a while, I'd rather not change horses.
I just, well, it was just created in September.
But it's still a short, you know, a short-term thing. It's sort of be a little, we, we might not be serving the public interest by swapping people out.
That's, that's, that could be. Now, if it goes on next year, I...
It's, it's, yeah. From my perspective, it's up to you guys. It was on, it was, Mark, you indicated some interest. Ron was already on it. I, Ron said he was interested in continuing to do it, so I left him on it, so...
Well, yeah, maybe if it continues next year, maybe we, maybe switch it up. Switch it up then, yeah. Yeah, I'd be fine with that. And as a matter of fact, I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to have other council members, you know, be exposed to the various housing issues that we have in, in the county.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with leaving it alone for now, but we'll see how it goes. I don't know, I don't even know if it's going to be renewed next year. It was just sort of the county supervisors created it for this year. I don't know what they're going to do next year.
Okay. And Mark, is there anything specifically that you would be more interested in now that you've had a chance to look at the list?
Well, the, I, when I was doing my tally, I wasn't so much looking at it from the point of, gee, what would I rather have had?
Right.
Because, because I was just trying to do just sort of a general back-of-the-envelope wading of stuff, because, you know, I, I do respect the effort and time you put into it, and I do remember from what I did...
It didn't take that long.
Well, you don't have to disabuse my, my view of what you're doing. Well, I will, I will just say, going forward, you know, I've always had an interest, and it's spent a fair amount of time reading up on the background and minutes for various reasons on Silicon Valley Clean Water. And so certainly, you know, if Bob rotates off of that next year, I would be interested in doing something like that. And, you know, if he's, wants to do that this year, I'm happy to do it now, or services alternate or whatever. But it's, let's not spend, we could spend hours doing this. I made the observation mostly because I was concerned about you and Ron more than anything else. I felt like the rest of us weren't pulling our own weight.
Okay. Thanks. Any other comments, questions, suggestions?
Well, just while we're talking about it, the one, there's one area that I wouldn't mind if Mark is interested in, and I wouldn't mind giving up the Economic Development Subcommittee. You were on it before. I don't know if you're interested in coming back on it, but you and I were on it together.
Oh, yeah, I'd be, I'd be, if there's something that I'm assigned to that you'd like.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
Or if you just want to transfer it, I don't remember even the count of stuff, but yes, I would be happy to...
Okay. No, I mean, you're as competent as I am in that area, and that might, that's probably an easy one to change up.
And for the purpose of creating a parking subcommittee, Jeff, do we need to agendize assigning members to that committee in the future?
No.
Okay. So I would like to serve on that committee. Is there anyone else who would like to join me?
I would love to join you.
Okay. All right. Anyone, any objections?
No.
Okay.
I'm at it.
All right.
Now, I think our first order of business is we're eliminating on-street parking up on Crestview on that particular stretch where Mr. was...
900 block?
Yeah.
That'd be great. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Does, Yvette, do you have all the changes we just made?
I can make a motion.
Okay. Well, then, having said that, I just want to make sure that I ask Yvette, and again, apologize, but through the chair, we need to identify, if we've changed, and I think we have, a half a dozen of these, we need to notify the, the groups that they need to send the packets out to somebody else.
Yes.
And, and I don't know, like the, well, a couple of these, like I said, so that people will know that there are going to be new, new people coming on. So, okay, thanks.
I'm sure that's done.
Okay. I'll be happy to make a motion if the chair wants me to do that.
Absolutely. I've got the changes, so I'm actually happy to make the motion just to...
Go ahead, go please.
Make sure that I get all the changes.
Sure.
So, I, well, first of all, is there any public comment on this issue? Okay. So I'll move that we accept the appointments to City Council Subcommittee and Ad-Hoc Committees. Put it in the handout with the following changes. The Economic Development Subcommittee substitute, Mark Olbert for Ron Collins, and assigning to the Parking Subcommittee Cameron Johnson and Mark Olbert.
Do we need to reflect the change that, if you're willing to do it, the change we were talking about on the Wheeler Plaza Subcommittee?
Yeah, and note that the Wheeler Plaza Subcommittee covers downtown development, downtown development issues in general. Yeah, big development projects downtown.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?